All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May 5, 2025 Planning Board hearing. Before we start the hearing, I would like to explain the procedures we will be following. When a case is called, the applicant will present their case to the board. The applications and full staff reports were all posted on the Village website at least a week ago and were available for the public to review. The applicant and all speakers in support or opposition to the application are reminded that the board's decision will be based on the standards set forth in the Village Code, and all comments should be directed to those standards. After the applicant's presentation is completed, the board may ask questions of the applicant and may ask questions of the applicant or other speakers at any time during the hearing. Comments first in support and then in opposition to the application will be heard. After all the testimony has been heard, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide rebuttal testimony. At the conclusion of the applicant's rebuttal, the case will be closed. After closing the hearing, for each individual case, the board will deliberate and vote. During this time, no additional testimony may be given by anyone. Please note that if your case is approved today, a written decision will be mailed to you. Before we open the first case, please note that we are all volunteers. I would like each of the board members to confirm their presence for purposes of roll call and establish a quorum for this hearing and to introduce themselves and mention their area of expertise. If I can start off by welcoming Amanda Font, who is our alternate, but today will be serving as a full member, planning board member. Do we need to somehow make it? Okay?
Joseph Burka, Planning Board Member.
Yana Gransky, Planning Board Chair.
Heather Williams, Planning Board Member.
David Cruzy, Planning Board Member.
Sean, you can introduce yourself.
Go ahead.
Sean, alternate Planning Board Member.
Thank you. And we can start by approving last meeting minutes from November 4, 2024. Is that when we met last? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November 4, 2024?
That's it. Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion passed. Oh, everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we can go ahead and start with Case 1, which is 25 North Main Street. And I would ask the applicant to come and speak to that project. Welcome.
Good evening. As you may know, I'm representing here Erie Canal Boat Company. We have been in the village and working with the community for 21 years, I believe. So hopefully, everybody's familiar with what we do. We rent kayaks and bicycles. We handle the maintenance and the yard care of that. If the...
And there are how many boat racks currently on the property?
Currently, there are one, two, I think, six boat racks, but that'll be reduced to like four. So two of them are temporary for equipment that New York State bought, which is going, which are going to be distributed across to other areas as we expand the program.
And I'm just wondering if you could tell me how tall the boat racks are?
I think the tallest one is just over six feet, but most of them are only four feet tall.
Do you think we can page to the site plan on the screen?
Let's see. Page four, I think, has probably the best picture of the...
Well, so 16 and 17, 16 is the existing conditions, and I'd like to focus on 17 because that's ultimately where the applicant is going to go on this one. So as Peter mentioned, we did take and we reviewed the entire code, and Peter ensured that what he was proposing, so things are going to be moving a little bit, is in compliance with the code. Peter didn't mention, but it's in the staff report that he will be going before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for outdoor storage because that's something that the code captures. So as Peter said, he's been here for a while. This is a matter of getting it out on paper and memorializing it, and Peter, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I'm terribly sorry, but I do have just one or two others.
Go ahead.
What are the hours of operation?
Generally, we open up at 10 o'clock. However, based on what happened with COVID, we also take organizations in a little bit early. We can start as early as 9 o'clock, and we generally go, unless we're having a moonlight paddle, to about 8:30. Again, people don't always come back when they're supposed to.
And you are not currently proposing any additional structures or signage beyond what's kind of currently shown there?
Not, not at this point, no.
Nor are you looking for permanent parking of things like trailers or anything like that? That's just as you move things in and out of the premises. Is that fair?
Yeah, the two trailers that are there are used to move boats in the organization from location to location as communities, you know, have their programs. However, we will be stationing those at our lock port location over the winter from this point on. Anything else?
Anyone else? I don't, I don't think I have any questions. We definitely appreciate you being in our village.
Well, I appreciate the openness of the village itself.
When do you have those moonlight? What are those? When do that typically take place?
Well, we usually do try to do a full moon paddle at least once or twice a season. It's probably going to be August this year, just one, because we're helping out Brockport and fulfilling our obligations to Blackport, Rockport, and the, on the canals program that we're helping sponsor the adaptive equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. So just the reason I was asking some of my questions is I would suggest that we do an approval of this longstanding use in the village. That's been an important part of our community, but just with some conditions, just so that there are expectations set, I think, for future potential users of the property as well. So I'll float some suggestions and see what my colleagues think about them. So, conditions, go ahead.
Did we want to have any other questions from the board before we start talking about action?
Sorry, not to jump the gun.
Okay, so the next thing I'm going to do, because it seems like there are no other questions for the applicant, is I'm going to ask if there's anybody in support of the application. Is there anyone in opposition to the applicant? The application. I'm sorry, Peter. Listen to me.
Quite all right.
Does the board have any additional questions for Peter before we have him sit down? So during the deliberations, and this is a reminder for all the applicants, during the deliberations, the applicant cannot have a conversation, the public cannot have a conversation with the board. This is their time to do their work. So Peter, do you have anything that you'd like to add before we close the hearing?
I do not.
Okay, perfect. So you can have a seat. The planning board will now discuss among themselves your application.
You want to talk about those conditions? Okay. Here's, here's what I'm thinking. Approval conditioned on, one, the site being maintained in clean and organized condition, like it already is. Two, that boat racks cannot exceed, I think, we heard that the maximum height is a little over six feet, so maybe you make it seven or eight. I don't have a strong, I'm not tied to that number. I don't know if anyone else has an opinion? Seven feet, is seven feet an unusual footage for one of those? Okay, seven feet in height. The boats and kayaks remaining in the racks at all times, except when they're being used by, by customers or getting staged to use. No additional signage beyond what's currently on premises. No added roof structures, like tents or pavilions. Hours of operation, do we want a condition on hours of operation, folks? It does sound like we have the opportunity for some exciting moonlight cruises on the canal, so I just want to be mindful of that, too. Do folks have an opinion on hours?
I don't feel strongly about hours.
And then last one would be no parking of utility trailers during the off-season, which it sounds like the applicant's already made a plan for. Do people have thoughts on that?
Could you, could you repeat number four?
No additional signage beyond what's currently on the premises?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I guess I should have said that, you know, clean and organized would be to the satisfaction of code enforcement.
I guess my only thing would be that seven feet boat racks. I don't know if that's, I don't know what the right number is. Can we ask questions of the applicant or not anymore, right?
Yeah, so you...
It's arbitrary right now.
So you could, when you're considering this, think about providing the applicant flexibility, but at the same time, not diminishing the view shed for folks. So is seven, you know, he explained that six and most of them are four feet in height. So is seven appropriate, or do you think eight would work better for the future? So keep in mind, too, that, and when the applicant crafted this application, it's with the mindset that you're creating a box in a lot of respects. So you're providing him that opportunity to grow if he needs that, but growth within parameters. So if you feel that eight feet works, you could say no higher than eight feet. You could say no higher than seven feet. If there is an issue down the road where the applicant finds that they are storing thousands of kayaks and they need more, well, then it's appropriate to come back to the planning board and have a discussion about that. So I guess that's up to you if you think eight feet works or seven feet. I mean, again, we heard from the applicant that most of them were four feet tall, and some of them were just over six feet.
Without any expertise on the market of kayak racks, eight feet feels like a good number in that it's an even number. But beyond that, I would, I would defer to anyone with expertise in boat racks on the exact size.
And I would, I would just say, you know, as long as it's, if that's a standard height to be in accordance with typical life safety procedures in and around the racks themselves, making sure that they're stable, you know, especially with young, young children that, that frequently go by, anything like that, anything that, you know, people are not going to hurt themselves. So, you know, as long as, especially if it's, if there's a standard to it. I would, I would rather rely on the standard versus just an arbitrary number.
That's a great idea to be...
Also don't need to, I guess, comment at all if you don't want to put a height.
I guess my only, if I can ask another question to the applicant.
No.
My only, then, then it would be, you know, if, if, if the number of racks have decreased, but in the potential future that there's additional boats or kayaks that, that are desired for here, making sure that there is enough capacity to accommodate those, those future supplies.
And that's why the areas have been shown on the site plan, so it's not limited to a number. So we're not saying, oh, you have 30 racks, you can only have 30 racks in the future. It's set out on the site plan as an area. One of the things to keep in mind is that at some point, the racks are going to be too tall to safely remove the kayaks. So I think that's why the majority of them are four feet at this point. But if you say, no, we don't want to put a limit on the height, I think by default it will be limiting because the employees of the institution are not going to be able to take them down and put them up.
Could, is this another place we could just do, you know, to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer and fire chief?
So, well, don't forget Mark is also the fire marshal. Can I have you comment on that in terms of, does building code regulate the height of the kayak storage?
Not necessarily. It's not going to be something that's going to be spelled out specifically in building code for that. Usually, storage racks are, there's a little bit in the fire code for how they're stored, but it's usually indoors, and this is all outdoor stuff. You know, six feet is, is plenty big, eight feet is plenty big. I don't see any reason why an eight-foot tall wouldn't be structurally sound. I mean, Peter makes a lot of these things himself, too. They're not pre-made things, so he can make them with a wide base. He can do what he needs. Eight feet seems reasonable.
And then it goes back to, is it a condition that you feel you absolutely must have for the success of the application?
Okay, so I don't think it hurts. So I would like to make a motion to approve with the conditions, changing seven feet to eight feet, as Heather has outlined so diligently.
I'm fine with that. Can we go ahead and make a motion? Oh, you already made the motion? I second. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, once your case is over, you're more than welcome to stay, but we also won't be offended if you leave. Okay, for this next case, before we get started, I am going to have the planning board go through SEAKER, and that's the State Environmental Quality Review. So I'm going to call the case first. The case is Case 2. The case type is a planning board review. The address is 19 Pleasant Street. The applicant is Christian Duer. The request is to review plans for a residential property that proposes work affecting the exterior of a structure. So for SEAKER, it's an unlisted action, and the lead agency is the planning board. So I trust that everybody has reviewed not only the short SEAKER form that was provided within the application, but also all the information in the application. So what we'll do is we will go through Part 2. I will ask each question, and then if you could please respond with no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact may occur. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No or small impact?
Yeah. Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No or small impact?
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No or small impact?
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No or small impact?
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Nope.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Uh, no.
Will the proposed action impact existing public water supplies or public wastewater treatment utilities?
Nope.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
Uh, no or small impact.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
Uh, no or small impact.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
Uh, no or small impact.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
So it has been determined, based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, of course, being the application, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Does the board agree with that? Okay.
Yes.
So at the end of the meeting, Yana, if I could just have you sign this. And so SEAKER has completed, the planning board has issued a negative declaration. So now if the applicant could come up?
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Christian Duer. I'm the architect, the applicant, and this is...
I'm Tom Sekely. I'm the project manager.
And we, we have clients, the Kaisers who live in Penfield, who want to have kind of the end of, you know, their next step is empty nesters, move back to Fairport. And they've owned this property. I don't actually know how long they've owned it, but they want to renovate the third floor and live there. I think I'd want to live, renovate the third floor and live there myself, too. So the problem with that is that we, we have an interior design that doesn't really meet the, their egress without disrupting their existing tenants. And they kind of wanted their own private entry. So we came up with this proposal to build a, well, an elevator and an exterior staircase. And in addition, they wanted a deck off the rear, you know, to look at the municipal parking lot. I'm sure they can see the canal, but anyway, it's just kind of funny. So we initially designed the, the elevator and the, and exposed exterior staircase. The initial thought was that is we wanted to not, to limit how we block the existing windows of the existing tenants. And the owner, the kind of, we don't show it, but he, he has this idea of making some kind of decorative staircase, which I don't really know what that means, you know? But then after a review with the planning board chairman, we came up with an alternate as well for an enclosed staircase. And which actually I thought came out better than I thought it would, surprisingly, you know, from my original, you know, thoughts. And that's kind of where we stand. It's going to look just like, you know, with the enclosed staircase, just like the existing building. The windows will be matched in size. I, I don't propose we kind of match the details around the top and the crown. I want it to kind of look like it is a little bit of an addition. But the siding, same spacing, the details are on the top of the, the roof line will be, will be the same. And I think that's really about it.
It looks so much better enclosed.
I must admit, I think it looks better, too.
The owner just wanted to have it, he called it artisan-style kind of stair rail, not just looking like a fire escape stair rail. But again, it was more in our design saying, okay, we're blocking some windows in some of the apartments there, and that's why it was going to be open, so.
You guys, is there a plan to put a pathway or some sorts from the doorway at the stair to the, either the existing side? to either the existing sidewalk or to the pathway up front?
Yeah, I didn't show that, did I? There will be. I suspect there will be. I apologize for that.
No, it's all right.
Are we giving bigger boots?
Yeah.
I know. I think the owner will like the fact when he gets to the base of the stair, it'll be heated and he can walk up the stairs in heat where it's not blowing and crazy in the winter. So, of course, he could take the elevator as well, but...
I had just one question. I think it's a confirmation. This is not a historically designated structure, right?
No, it's not. Thank God. No, sorry.
And just to clarify, the materials of this stair tower, they will match the existing building siding?
We'll use a cement board siding, but we'll do the same lap as the existing. And we'll match, all the features that you see in dimensions will be matched. We'll be using new material, you know, that actually will last longer and hold paint longer, you know, than the existing material.
And color?
Yep, color will match, yep, yep.
And the size of windows will match the...
This will match the same, you know, rough, you know, within standard window sizes, you won't notice it from a distance. But we'll try to get as close to those original windows as possible. They'll have to be tempered because of the way the stairwell. If you notice the stairwell, you know, it's not like a planned window at a landing, you know? It's just to match the window patterns of the existing building. So they'll be tempered, but they would be tempered anyway, so I guess I, you know...
There's no mullions in the windows, so at least there doesn't appear to be, so that's nice. But can you match the trim of the existing windows to the new windows?
Do you mean the...
Exterior, like...
Divided lights or the trim around the window?
The trim around.
Oh, yeah, it'll be, it'll be the same, dimensionally, it'll all be the same except for the crown at the top, you know, that detail.
Right, and it, well, it seems like you're matching what's existing or close to it.
Close to it. I just don't have the little detail on the head of the window.
It just seems like you're making that dormer kind of come out, right?
Yes, correct. The existing dormer just projects out.
Yeah, like the roof, the roof, the top of the ridge stays the same.
Yes, correct.
All the way out, okay.
Correct, yep.
The porch, I don't really have much detail on that.
You mean the rear deck?
Yes, the rear deck, thank you.
Joseph, do you mind if I jump in for one second? Because I want to make sure that I fully understand. So the proposed addition will not have the crown detail on the windows?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it will not have the crown details on the window? Oh, I thought you were talking about up under the soffit.
Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna... I don't think we'll exactly match the details underneath the roof line, underneath the eve, but we'll do the same spacing, the same pattern.
Okay.
I don't know if we can get, you know, that same detail, you know? But we'll make it look like it should.
And you're not willing to match the window trim to the existing?
It's...
You mean the inside crown itself, the crown on top of the window?
Well, I mean, all four sides of it.
No, we're going to match all, we're going to match three sides. We're just not going to match, we weren't proposed to match the detail across the top.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
But we can try to.
So, and something to keep in mind is that when we're looking at the drawing, it appears that it's all one facade, but this will be stepped back. So just so that is known, too.
Jill, can I ask a question? This is a unique review we're doing of a residential structure. I was wondering if you could just explain, maybe for the benefit of anyone who might be observing, why it is we're reviewing a residential structure and if there's a particular standard we should be bearing in mind?
Sure. So in this case, the property is located in the LCR district, and the LCR district requires that the planning board review new construction or work affecting the exterior of a structure prior to the issuance of a building permit. So the criteria that the planning board is using is the style and scale of the structure, its dominant architectural features such as roof pitch, outline porches number, and style of window and door openings, and the color and texture of building materials. So this is a unique review. It doesn't follow the site plan review. It's sort of its own thing.
So the porch, what materials are going to be used for that?
The deck on the rear is what you're saying?
Yeah, is that, is that what, do you want me to call it a deck?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, deck. The third-story deck, what are the materials for that?
It's got to be the PVC wrapped, you know, railings and cap rails and AZAC flooring. And, you know, the only wood will be the presser treat structure underneath, you know?
Can that be wrapped?
Well, the columns can be wrapped. The columns can be wrapped, yes.
I guess the intent that I would have is just that there's no exposed wood. I mean, if you're looking up from underneath, probably okay with that, but on the sides and the top and...
No, there'll be, there'll be trim boards around the sides to hide the rim joints, you know, that are the primer structure of it. I don't propose like a skirt down to the roof line because we'll just trap debris underneath the roof and we want it to drain. But you'll, you will not, from the street, see, well, it projects slightly beyond the roof line, so...
Yeah, but you'll, it'll be all composite decking and railing.
But you'll see the joists. You'll see the underside.
I'm not worried about that.
Okay, yeah.
But the posts would have to wrap it AZAC.
That's more of what I was thinking. And then the parking structure...
Wait, can I just add to your question about the deck? What, so to me, just looking at the drawings really quick, it looks, can you talk about maybe how it will be supported structurally? I guess I just want to avoid like huge cross bracing across the span of this. And right now, there's one to three columns supporting this huge deck.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the plan?
Well, structurally, it'll be tied to the existing facade. And then with the AZAC, we don't get much diagonal bracing. It's not like plywood, but we'll do diagonal bracing underneath the deck, you know, so that it'll act like a, it won't rack at all. And once we control the racking, there's nowhere, the posts don't need to be diagonally braced. So that's the plan.
That answered my questions. I just didn't want to see like big Xs on the side of it.
Well, unless, if something goes astray and it does happen that we need to have big Xs, you actually have to go back before the planning board to have them review that. So, so any changes will require a trip back, so just so everyone's aware of that.
So for the garage, what materials were you planning for that?
Same materials. It's, siding is going to match the existing house, AZAC trim, and all that, you know? I mean, it'll be kind of a standard, it will look similar, but it'll look, it'll look more modern, you know? Just be, except for, you know, the siding spacing will be the same, the trim will be the same. But it's something that, like, would never really have been built at that time period.
Yeah, because each individual column between each power port would be wrapped in AZAC. And then the three sides, the two sides, even if we did, I don't know if we're going to do the sides, but at least the back two.
It shows, yeah, all three sides.
And everything would be the same as the house.
Perfect, okay. That's really what I was hoping to hear out of you, so thank you.
Yeah, no, no worries. It's, I don't know, did I show you any, did you have any photos of the interior space that I, no, because it's, I should have, it's just, yeah, it's incredibly...
Yes. They'll be offering complimentary tours when it's complete?
The building inspector might need some help, you know?
Only on canal days. That's, the tours will be on canal days.
Oh, that's right.
Plus, that's the only, how many people could fit in the elevator?
Right, right, that's true, it might be.
Actually, I had one, one quick question regarding the elevator. Since the elevation is working really nicely, the addition of the stairwell, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the elevator doesn't need like additional height for, you know, the machinery or anything like that, that it's going to stick out of the dormer or anything like that, that it all fits inside nicely?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you. And then do we want to talk about maybe the location of refuse, the garbage cans that are there? If, since it is a design district overlay and it mentions that you should conceal any garbage refuse or could be relocated?
They just need to be in the rear yard.
Not visible from the main street?
Not visible from the street, yep.
So behind the house.
Correct.
Or behind the stairwell structure, if that allows it.
I can't imagine it. I mean, they must be doing it now.
So currently, it's on the side of the property. And of course, you know, things like this don't come up until you do something different to your property and then...
I mentioned it to Sam.
Okay.
When, prior to this, that it just came up and said that. One of the things was that the toques needed to be in the backyard.
And I'm assuming he was receptive to that?
Oh, glowingly.
Perfect. That's what we like to hear.
Wow.
Yes. Any other questions? No? Any questions from the public in support? No?
Before we move to that, can I just go back to the discussion? And I don't want to harp on this, but I guess I'm going to a little bit, on the windows. Is there a desire from the planning board to condition? Or are you okay as proposed?
I don't feel strongly about having the top decorative framing on the windows because there's already an existing addition on it that has windows, and this is an addition. I don't think it needs to exactly copy it. I like that it copies it in size and style. How do you feel about that, Joe? The top decorative element?
No, I mean, I think you should, but I also don't think we normally condition stuff on residential, so I'm not like feeling like I would push that. So it's more of fact-finding, asking questions here, so I get where you're at.
Yeah, I also think it's not a historically designated structure. The area in question is not forward-facing, and I think the team has done a good job of getting close enough to feel good, from my perspective.
Okay.
Last year, it's quite expensive, so I'm sympathetic to not doing that. There's something to be said for matching the style but not trying to pretend it's historical when it's in fact a very modern.
If you look at the rear of the building as well, it's like even back then, they didn't do the, some of the details on the rear that they did on the front, you know? So they were trying to save money back then as well.
Yeah. Are there any additional questions for the applicant? Is there any other information that you'd like to share?
No.
Okay, so I'll call, is anybody in support of the application? Anyone in opposition to the application? Would you like to close the hearing? And again, we can't have conversations.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so you can sit down. The board will deliberate. When I was going through the application and listening to you, there were a couple of things that I picked up on, and so I'm going to present them to you, and you can decide if you'd like to proceed with them. But I think some things that you might want to condition if you decide that you want to move towards an approval is that there be a walkway from the proposed addition to the sidewalk, that there be no exposed wood on the deck addition, and also that the refuse be relocated so as not to be viewed from the street. And you can also condition it on approval by the zoning board of appeals for the required variance.
Is the refuse being located in a non-visible location, isn't that already a code requirement?
It's something, it's part of the design overlay district. If you wanted to say, we're okay with the way it is, you could. But in this case, I think the applicant has demonstrated a willingness to comply. And also, I think that there's plenty of room to do so. So it's always easier to get it on the record as a condition.
And do we need to condition all the finishes that they explained, or is that just part of...
No, that's, it's part of.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, I think I'm ready to do it if everybody's good.
Any other, yes?
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve with those conditions as you've outlined?
Mm-hmm.
I can second. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You guys ready? No, no, that's okay. Okay, this next one, case three, this is a site plan review. This, the address is ninety-four South Main Street. The applicant is James Krueger. The request is to change use from a place of worship to an assembly space on the second floor and educational studio space on the first floor. This was held from the August fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
You have, because I have your copy of your presentation, it hasn't changed at all?
Yeah, can we put it up?
It hasn't changed since you submitted it?
No.
Okay.
No, there's actually, so I saved it as a separate file.
This one?
Yep.
Hello, everyone. I'm back. Brought friends. Chris Castanza is an architect. He'll be talking about a lot of the technical stuff. And Courtney Shu is representing OFC Creations. And we got the PowerPoint up, so let's begin. So when I first looked at this property almost two years ago, I envisioned seeing an amazing theater, just the space if no one's ever been inside. It's absolutely gorgeous and breathtaking. And at one point, the village or one of the town entities was looking at turning it into a theater. After I already purchased it, I was made aware of this. And so obviously, someone else thought that it would be also a great space to have amazing venues here in the Village of Fairport. So as I've been going through the quest of trying to make this property a viable business and a great place for Fairport to have a place for shows, I stumbled across OFC. Oh, that's very nice. Thanks. And at our last meeting, we wanted some more detail, so I brought Chris in to bring in some more of the technical stuff for you guys to feel comfortable with the project. And having Courtney here to speak about OFC, I'm sure you may have questions about their organization if you've never been to any of their shows. Creating a family, fun place for people all over the Monarch County area to send kids or having professional shows is going to be our goal. And having you guys take a look at this to get it moving is going to be, hopefully, answered today. So we see approximately, I'm not going to go in order, but three hundred seats is about the capacity of the venue. We talked about OFC, it's going to be the tenant, and they're going to run the... There's, with the income coming in from OFC, we'll be able to get it painted and, I don't know, whoever put that pink primer on, it really drives me nuts. And get, there's a lot of woodwork on the exterior, up in the bell tower that needs to be replaced. All those things will be able to happen with income being generated actually at the, at the space. And other things, you know, dance recitals, other venues that could go on there are all things that they could possibly book and use for the space. So, that's a little bit about what the place is gonna be. Daily operations, we are going to focus on children and learning and learning theater and everything that goes with that. There's gonna be classes and camps. Some of the big concerns, obviously, are gonna revolve around drop-off of kids and how that'll be taking place. We'll get into that in some more detailed slides. But safety, obviously, is our most important aspect to make sure that everybody gets into their camp or show or location and picked up properly. There's a lot of details that have been provided. OFC has been doing this for a very long time, and they will be able to definitely give you examples of how they run things. We're gonna be taking care of having crossing guards at large events. We're gonna mainly focus on entering and exiting through the front to monitor traffic of people coming in and out of the building, though the side entry does have an elevator and will be more used for handicap needs and maybe bringing in like things that, sets or things that need to be transported in that would be easier through the side. Staggering classes, staggering drop-offs, making sure that we really think about how the space is being used is something we really focused a lot of attention on, because that was a lot of concern from the last meeting. Traffic control, I'm gonna probably turn some of this over to Chris. He spent a lot of time looking at traffic and parking and anything that he wants to discuss. Okay, taking over a little bit?
Sure. All right. Yes, I know the board has a lot of concern about the traffic and how drop-off and pickup times would work and how shows would work when you have, you know, full theater. Fortunately, the town had a, or the village had a parking study that was done last summer. They looked at all the parking that was available in the municipal lots and street lots when the parking demand was high. I know one of the, the letters from one of the neighbors was talking about a traffic study. A lot of that work was done in that recent, recent parking study for, for the village last summer. And there's, the, from that parking study, there's, you know, there's hundreds of spaces that are available, more than what the demand deficit is for this property. So this property has, you know, calculated spaces, is now 175. We had calculated it less because we were looking at the flex space on the lower level being, you know, an occupancy of 15 square feet per person. So that would be like unconcentrated tables and chairs. The, I think, I don't know if it was Mark or you, Jill, that recalculated that to have like 114 people in the basement level.
Well, the reason being is because there were a couple drawings that had different labels for it, and it was unclear exactly what that use was.
Okay.
So that's why there was a minimum and a maximum, because I'm still not clear on what the parking requirement is.
Yes, so with, within the range, whatever it is, you know, the maximum being 175 parking deficit, the, the parking study from, that the village had done shows that there's something like 260, you know, available parking spaces that are, and that the parking, that is, the public parking is underutilized at certain times of day. The, the space that we're planning on using on the lower level is actually gonna have less parking demand than what, I think, that maximum 175, because it is gonna be for unconcentrated tables and chairs and not for standing room only, which is what it was calculated at. The, the parking that is proposed for Delaney House, which is, I think, 75 spaces, that is parking that's available a block away to the east, you know, that parking is not available when Delaney House is having, is it Deland House or Delan? Deland? But when Deland House is having dinners on weekends, Fridays and Saturdays, the parking is not available during that time. But even with that parking not available, the other parking in the municipal lots, the church lot and, and street parking is sufficient for the parking demand. For the traffic flow, I know there was a comment on maybe making the entrance on the north side of the church a one-way lane. That property is not, is split, the lane width is split between the owner of the church and then the owner of the building to the north. So that would require, you know, some sort of easement or agreement with the, with the town and I think for the, or the DOT for the one-way signage and then also for the property owner to the north.
Have you inquired with the property owner about the potential of that occurring?
No, 'cause I mean, at this point, I don't know that that is, I don't know that that is the best option to do one-way there. You know, having the parallel parking with, you know, all the handicap spaces that are in front of the, the main entrance on that north side of the church, they're all handicap spaces. So we have, we have five handicap spaces there, two loading spaces, and then a third, a third loading space, that's, that's also like a, you know, a loading space for equipment or a caterer as well. It's not marked as a handicap space, but it's the size of a regular parking spot. It's on the site plan label that's loading. So, and then there's, there's three other spaces that are not to the current code for the town. I think they need to be longer. So we have three 19 spaces with a one-foot gap in between each one. So really, that, that was called out as three parking spaces, or two of them being snow removal in the wintertime. So I think what we would do there is probably have two parking spaces or one parking space and snow removal in, in the wintertime, once we stretch those parking spaces by an extra foot or so. What else can I say about parking? As far as, you know, the, the flow of, you know, getting kids dropped off, I know the neighbor, when he wrote a letter, he mentioned about Brooks Elementary School and what, you know, pickup time is like and is chaotic, just every, you know, elementary school is on pickup time. I think Brooks has about 600 students, if I, if it's correct what I read on, online. And the, the pickup time is a 15-minute window. So you have a lot of cars, you know, picking up a lot of people, you know, young kids, and they're, they might, you know, take longer to get in and out of cars. So I don't see that the demand for the parking is gonna be the same chaos as what you'd see at an elementary school when there's a show here. And I think a lot of people will end up going to the, to the parking spaces where they normally park, you know, a lot of the, if there's 50 kids or 40 kids in the show, those kids will have been dropped off by their parents, you know, multiple times before the showcase or before the showtimes, which is when there's, you know, the highest parking demand is. And with, you know, those parents will likely just go to the, the parking lot to the north or the, or find the street parking if they can, and they'll have a pattern and they'll be used to doing it. It's more the people that are the grandparents or the people that are uncles and aunts who are coming for the first time to see the show, they're gonna be kind of a little bit flustered and they're gonna be looking around over at a park. So, you know, I think following New York State traffic laws is kind of my first, you know, idea of where people, you know, will figure it out. I don't picture that people are gonna be stopping on Church Street or Main Street in order to let someone out of the car. Those are busy streets. It would be against traffic laws to do so. There's not a lot that the owner of the building or anyone really can do to prevent someone from stopping on Church Street and letting someone out of their car. But that would be the same for any, you know, any street or any business anywhere. So I don't know that that's something that, you know, that we're real concerned with. I think that most people will be finding parking spaces. The, the clientele for the shows are pretty much families. I mean, this is a family-oriented business. The shows are family-oriented. There's a lot of people that will, you know, come here for the first time. They'll visit Fairport for the first time. They might stop by, you know, a coffee shop or a bar or a restaurant after a show. So it'll bring some business and some, you know, some livelihood into the village. And I think that the, overall, the parking will be, you know, chaotic a little bit at times when there is a big show, but it's not going to be where parking is, is, or traffic is stopped and there's a dangerous situation on the main streets. I think people will just find, find parking where they need to find parking. There is access, you know, to main thorough streets on two sides, 'cause this is a corner lot. So there is two ingresses and egresses to the, to the church as, as well as, you know, all the other parking spaces that are within a block or so away. So I think that people will find, find parking and out of the, you know, 150 cars that might, you know, be showing up to a show, the, the shows, the doors open an hour beforehand. So at the current OFC Theater, you know, it, people will show up starting an hour beforehand. Most people show up about half hour beforehand. So it's not like you're gonna have 150 cars showing up in a 15-minute window. I think you're gonna have them kind of spread out over, you know, an hour, hour and 10 minutes. And then on the way out, when people are leaving, you know, there might be a traffic jam getting out of the parking lots, but it won't be a traffic jam at the intersection because, you know, traffic will be flowing based on the, the traffic lights. I should have showed you this before. So, I mean, this just shows, you know, where, where some of the parking is. Is there a pointer? No pointer? But, you know, within, within 500 feet radius of the building, there are two municipal park, parking spaces, two commercial parking spaces that have agreements to use those parking, as well as the onsite and the street parking that's available. Yeah, so there's, there's the count for the remaining spaces based on the parking study that was done. And those are only counting the parking spa, parking lots that are within 500 feet of the site.
I wanna talk a little bit about the parking agreements.
Sure.
There was a comment about being a legitimate contract. We have an agreement with both these places. They're obviously not gonna sign over or sell us their parking spaces, and we have an agreement with them that for the church, we're gonna be doing a $500 donation every month. Churches around town need all the help they can get with costs and rising costs and lower parishioners going to church and donating, so that's gonna help them out greatly. We're obviously gonna be very mindful and respectful of their, their lots, making sure there's not garbage and goofing around. Again, it's not like there's gonna be Metallica concert there and people are gonna be, you know, tailgating in their parking lots. This is a very family-oriented business that's gonna be running here. And I don't see any issues with the agreements that we have, and they are gonna be made sure that, my goal is to make sure logistics-wise that everything goes smoothly and I keep in communication with, with both the Deland House, and we hope to do some collaborative things with them and, and the United Congressional Church. So I wanted to make one note when Chris was talking that, and you'll see when Courtney presents a lot of stuff they do with OFC, that they really do a great job of communicating to parents and ticket holders about where to go, what to do, and, you know, maybe some of them that didn't go through the information as careful, maybe a little confused at first, but they do a really good job of letting, letting parents and kids know what they're able to do. There's not gonna be a bunch of people coming at that, at the theater and 100 cars showing up. Their goal will be to go to designated areas and for young children, kids, that parents will be able to walk them and pick them up and bring to the parking spot. We're not just gonna let kids run all over the place. That is not gonna be allowed. There's gonna be crossing guards and there'll be very strict rules on how to behave in that, on that corner, and, and I don't foresee this being an issue at all. Some examples of some signs, we'll have no parking signs, parking only for staff and handicap when there's shows, we'll put out A-frame signs. Oh, why don't, Chris, you talk a little about the garbage?
Yeah, so, one of the comments I think you had recently was about the, whether the two or three 96-gallon toters would be enough garbage capacity. And based on the existing 200-person, 200-seat theater or 200?
About 250 at max.
So, so based on the 250-seat theater that OFC runs currently, they only have about one toter per week that gets picked up. So we're, you know, we're providing more than that. If they do have, you know, the end of a show where they might be getting rid of some of the stage props or something like that, they'll call for an extra pickup so that, so they might get two in a week. But for the most part, the, you know, the, the two or three toters is plenty enough for what, you know, the use is. One of the comments too you had was on a typo. I apologize, but on the, the floor plan, it said a 3,000-square-foot kitchen. It's only a 300-square-feet kitchen, and it's really just a warming kitchen. It doesn't have, it's not meant for, you know, cooking with a, you know, a type-one, you know, commercial hood. There's no deep fryers, there's no grease or anything like that. So it's really just a warming kitchen, and it's 300 square feet, not 3,000 square feet. You know, the, the waste bins, the, the goal is to, you know, enclose those in a, in a nice prefabricated enclosure that has different style finishes. You know, we'll find one that is appropriate and, you know, then put it, so a little bit of landscape screening on the sides of the enclosure as well. So from, you know, from the main street going down, if you're looking at the side of it, you're gonna see some landscaping before you see the dumps or the toter enclosure. And then, you know, beyond that, you'll see a little bit of the enclosure.
So I do wanna add that anything that happens to the exterior of the property does require a certificate of appropriateness for the Historic Preservation Commission. So, you know, that's something that's under their purview.
Yep. And then the other, you know, the other site features, the existing sign that's on the corner will be reused with new wording, obviously, and the logo. There's gonna be a new concrete pad by the walkway with a bike rack, so that way there's some, you know, some parking for bikers. And then on, on the north side, you can see on the, on the picture here, we have the handicap spaces, the loading zone near the entry walkway, and then those three spots up on, you know, the, the north side on the left, you know, those would be changed either two spots or one spot and snow removal in the wintertime.
Chris, you pointed out earlier that there was a loading spot? Okay, I see it now.
Yeah, right to the right.
Yeah.
That is adjacent to the existing concrete sidewalk. So it is basically, it gives you a space or gives someone, like a caterer or someone that needs to unload these other equipment. It gives them an opportunity, you know, in between shows to, you know, park somewhere, unload everything without having to illegally park in a, you know, ADA handicap spot or handicap spot. So, you know, the way I understand the law is that if the, if the space is designated handicap and someone parks there to unload stuff, and, I mean, those will be five empty spaces when there's, you know, shows going on or when, when there's, you know, performances being prepared for and, and training and educational. So the idea is to give a, a legal space to kind of pull up and unload, you know, some of the equipment and materials.
So all equipment, materials, catering, that will all be provided in a passenger vehicle that could fit in one of those spaces?
One of the Sprinter vans usually, yeah.
Okay. Scenery, everything, equipment?
I can speak to that just a little bit, just 'cause I know what we already have.
Yes.
So we do have, we have a very normal Dodge Ram pickup truck that you would see everywhere. It's wrapped in purple, it has a big OFC label on it, but that is what we use to transport anything that's bigger. We do have a company SUV that we use to transport costumes, but things like that are just coming in like big plastic tubs, and we probably already have them in our storage in Brighton. So, I mean, it wouldn't be, we don't have anything bigger than that. So unless we acquired something, everything would be coming in that or a passenger vehicle.
So, and, and this is, you know, obviously the first that myself and, and the board are hearing from someone from OFC, so I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions.
I'll leave.
So I did notice from your website, there are a number of shows that are Brighton, are Broadway on Brighton.
Correct.
And so those don't have any sort of semi-equipment that's bringing, there's not a semi that's bringing in equipment or anything like that?
No.
It's all transported via the smaller vehicles?
Correct. So unlike, I'll adjust this, I know I'm loud, but for our Broadway and Brighton series, we do six shows a year, and those are professional. So, and this is, you know, obviously the first that myself and the board are hearing from someone from OFC, so I'm going to ask you a couple of questions.
By all means.
So I did notice from your website, there are a number of shows that are Brighton, are Broadway on Brighton.
Correct.
And so those don't have any sort of semi-equipment that's bringing, there's not a semi that's bringing in equipment or anything like that? It's all transported via the smaller vehicles?
Correct. So unlike, I'll adjust this, I know I'm loud, but for our Broadway and Brighton series, we do six shows a year and those are professional shows. So those are all adult actors. If we have the need for children, we obviously source from our students. But they are considered professional. So just like you would see at a Jiva or a Blackfriars or JCC of Rochester, that's what we're doing too. So we do six of those a year. That being said, we create all the set and all of the costumes in-house. So that's something where we don't really need to transport them right now. But if we did decide to do that caliber of show potentially here in Fairport, we would be transporting it the same way. So very different than something like if you go to see a touring production at Rochester Broadway Theatre League, they're bringing in the semi because they're bringing everything with them. Our shows don't tour, they are ours and that's it.
Some of these slides are kind of self-explanatory and we've kind of already discussed a little bit. Obviously, communication with the public, traffic, parking, that's something that we really are going to be focusing on. There's a great example in your packet on the Kodak Theater, the most recent event. And that actually, you know...
Yeah, this is great. This is what Jim is showing is this is an example of an information packet that we give, thank you, that we give out for any of our camps and any of our educational programs. So usually this will go out prior to the program ever starting, right? So parents get this in their email with whatever communication email address they gave us. We send this out and it's going to give them pointers for a number of things, but parking and traffic is one of them. I was looking through the packet that was printed off for us here tonight. And I think there is page numbers on it, but if you flip to 26 through 29, there's an example of this information packet, but specifically for our programs that we run at Kodak Center, which is up on the Greece-Rochester line. They have a similar situation to what I would imagine the Fairport one will be. It's on an extremely busy road. It is not a road that parents are going to stop and drop their kids off on. Ridge Road is no joke, especially through that stretch. They have a small parking lot that really is only for building employees right outside their side doors. But across the street, they have a huge, massive parking lot, which is where you would park if you ever saw a show there. But we have our families park in that parking lot across the street and they walk their kids in every single morning. OFC does do things big, but we do them very organized and we have to communicate a lot. It is just how we are wired. And so this is also very consistent. Our parents know to look for these information packets. Additionally, we do something similar for audiences. So our box office system will run a report on whatever, you know, 200 some odd patrons are coming to a show on a certain night and we send out a reminder email. See you tonight, our cafe is open until showtime, reminder that you park here. So it's something that is common for us and something that our existing families and students would be expecting from us. So it would really just be a new location and a new place.
This was something that was asked earlier, just as an example of a church converting into a theater, different than what we, it's a larger facility, but I don't think we really need to spend a lot of time. We talked a little bit about this. But it's a really great repurposing. I actually met the people out there. The talent and the people that go through their classes, the events that they have there really made this space that was borderline ready to be condemned into an amazing space. This is what I'm trying to accomplish here in Fairport. All right.
Yeah, awesome. And by all means, I'm happy for you to interrupt me with questions because I'm just going to start rambling here a little bit. So what OFC has been around in some capacity since 2005. It is owned by Eric Johnson. He is hands-on in the day-to-day operations of our business. He does more than just produce our shows. I mean, it is his business, he is there all of the time. He directs, he gets onstage sometimes when we force him, but he is there all the time. We spent some time up at Kodak Center around 2015 to 2018. We were housed in that building for a bit. Then we moved downtown to the Lyric Theater, which is also a restored church venue. We were there for probably about a year and a half, two years, and then our location in Winton Place opened up. So we did all of the renovations in 2020, got that all up and running and we were able to open under, you know, COVID regulations for summer camps that year. We, the building is very modern. It's state-of-the-art as we get more equipment and, you know, we renovate things to make it all work a little bit more smoothly. One thing to point out too is that our current location in Brighton, we are in a plaza, right? So we have a ton of parking, it's open. Lot, new lamps that are lighting the parking lot, it's all handicap accessible. So that's where we're at right now. So it is a little bit different. We do have parents who will just drop their kids off at the door and they run in, you know, the three feet into the building. That's kind of why I brought up earlier Kodak Center. When we do use that space, which happens during summers and usually during school breaks, we have a February break and an April break camp at Kodak. We do deal with a different kind of parking situation. So it's not something that is out of our scope of knowledge of how to handle, if that makes any sense. We offer educational programming 12 months out of the year for ages four to 18. And then we do have professional productions that come in six a year is what our model has been. And that usually goes September through May. And then we focus just on the kids during the summer months because that makes most sense for us. And that really is our bread and butter and how we started doing all of this. Additionally, part of what we started doing when we moved into the Winton Place location is we started renting our space to outside things. So during June, I have usually three to four dance recitals that book with us on the weekend days. We occasionally have just like one-night-only events. We have a Frank Sinatra impersonator that comes in and does his, he has like a full-blown concert, but he is with us twice a year. We have a woman who does a Patsy Cline tribute, she's pretty well-known in Rochester. We have things like that. I have hosted a wedding at the theater, lots of baby showers at our cafe venue that's two doors down. We really run the gamut and are willing to, you know, make anything happen if it fits. That being said, kind of to touch on those outside events because we were talking about this a little bit. We don't, as Jim has kept saying, we really are a family-friendly company and venue. So the kind of outside renters that come in or the rental events that come in are not ones that I would ever consider rowdy. They're very self-contained, they're catering to like a certain business or a certain demographic or just, they're just more intimate events. So it wouldn't be something like we would be coming here and like holding a rock concert. I know Babeville in Buffalo, that's like, they are a music venue. We are a theater venue, which is a little bit different. That being said, we have our big focus on our youth education, our classes, our performances. Then we mount the professional plays. I think that that is something that could evolve moving into this space. I don't know that that would be a jumping-off point immediately. The student programming would be, that would be our focus when we started here, especially because we have so many Fairport students in our doors already. So I think this would be very attractive to them. Okay, let's flip and see what we've got.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So I want to make sure that I understand the timeline. So Kodak Theater you were in and then you moved to the Lyric Theater?
Yes.
And why did you leave the Lyric Theater?
So the Lyric Theater got bought out by an actual church. So they became, they weren't a church, they were owned privately. And then the woman who owned the venue, she sold it and a church is housed in there now.
Okay. How did operations work there in terms of parking and, you know, the things that we're talking about here?
Where Lyric is, and this was also, I performed a lot at Lyric and I taught a lot at Lyric. I wasn't in my operational manager role until we moved into the Brighton space. But how it would work is there was a ton of street parking there because it's right on the corner of East. And then I want to say it is, it's wherever the Strathallon is, that's the corner. So a lot of street parking there. And then there was a very small lot directly across that you could park in. I would say maybe like 25 cars in that lot at the time, but that is how it would be. It would be street parking and it was just something that we had to prepare ourselves for the delay in starting shows and it would just take time.
And can I just ask a follow-up question to Jill's? But am I correct in understanding you that you still to this day are doing things over at Kodak? That's something that you guys do in the summer and at break time, right?
Yep. We just have a rental agreement with them. There's a very small, so there's that huge theater in Kodak. We don't use that. We did it one time when that was just our home base. There's a small family theater on their sub-basement level. And it probably seats about 115 people. So we'll do break camps there twice a year. And then we do our summer camp season there too. It just caters to our families. We have a lot of families from Hilton and from the Greece area and that works so much better for them when they're dropping their kids off in mornings.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask you about the Kodak location.
Yeah.
Historically, have there been any complaints or any issues relative to DOT out there, to parents, to police reports, anything like that relative to life safety?
No police reports. Biggest thing that we, I would say the only complaints that are coming through are us consistently reminding our families, you do not drop them off at the side door, you do not park in that side parking lot. It's more just that we are diligent about continuing to remind them that that's where it has to happen. I will also say, in comparison to the huge shows that they run in that upstairs theater, I mean, they have comedians and all kinds of acts that come through there year-round. In comparison to the crowd size that is there for that, we're nothing. So, I mean, it's manageable for us and we're used to it.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I can speak to this too because I'm mostly the daily occupancy. So employees, while we do a lot of things at OFC and we always have something going on, our full-time staff is not massive by any means. So I think that this is very accurate in saying that employees, so full or part-time, would be on hand for classes and events, of course, because we're there in a teaching capacity or in a management capacity. But also just daytime, to say that we would average one to three employees, I mean, three is probably generous. I would say there probably will be one person that pops in and out if we have somebody working on like lights or sound during the day before the kids get there at night. That could be something along those lines. Classes, I think five to 10 employees is also generous but accurate. You usually have about two to three employees per program, depending on the amount of kids in it. And then usually some lesson teachers that would pop in and out. So for example, we have a voice teacher who works with us roughly 30 hours a week just doing private lessons. So she has one kid at a time for a half an hour up to an hour. And then she just cycles through them, right? Parents come and drop their kids off. Most of the time during the school year, she'll start that maybe right around 3:00 PM and she can go up to 9:00 PM, but she makes her own availability and we have her calendar in front of us.
And I apologize if I missed this because I was scribbling a note down on something else.
Please.
How many classes are happening at one time? Are they staggered currently? So you've got kind of one flowing at a time or multiple classes happening at the same time?
Basically what we do, so usually throughout the year, and it works for me if I do like a timeline of the day. So at 4, during the school year, 4:00 PM would be the earliest start time for classes that we have. And those are always the little kids. So like the four- to seven-year-olds, the ones that maybe aren't necessarily in elementary school yet or, you know, they're still getting out at like 2:00, their parents can feed them and bring them to us. Those usually go 4:00 to 6:00 on a weekday and then on weekend mornings, usually 9:00 to 12:00. Those classes are small. So we're talking maybe, they get bigger during summer camp season, but that's a little different. But during the school year, if we sell one really, really well, you're looking at about 20 kids.
And you have that one class of 20? It's not like you've got three classrooms of 20, right?
Correct. So then as the evening usually goes on, so from like 4:00 to 6:00, it's going to be the little kids, right? And then around 6:00 would be when we would start our actual, like, seven-to-11-year-olds, 11-to-the-middle-school bracket, so like 11-to-14-ish, and then the teens. Usually, because where we are right now, we really don't, we might have things rehearsing overlapping because we have multiple spaces. But it's never like a show happening one on top of the other. It's always like one weekend houses one performance, if that makes any sense. But yes, most of the time, just due to our staffing demands too, it's pints into some kind of educational program in the evening. Weekends are a little bit different, but I think we would also just be staggering it based off of what we could do here. And I think that's all kind of hypothetical based off of classrooms and the spaces that we hypothetically would have in the building.
You bring up a good point then. So there's that, you still have to restrict yourself to a staff-to-student ratio?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, different than, I speak as a parent here, right?
That's what I'm asking as a parent.
A New York State daycare, they have very strict ratios. Our pint-size teacher is, she used to work full-time in daycare. So she very much functions with those little, little kids on a ratio. She always has an assistant for classes. As we move into like the elementary, the middle school, the teens, the teens are inevitably a smaller group, they just are. Because I think by that age, you find the kids who really look at it as a passion and you just have less of them. But with the kids and the middle school programs, those tend to be bigger. Usually, like I said, though, we have a director, a music director and a choreographer. And it's to be expected that at least two of them would be at any given day. So yes, I mean, we always have enough people on hand to manage who we have in the room. Awesome. Great. All right, let's take a look here. We kind of already went over this, so like this is correct. So like 9:00 to 4:50, you're looking at office staff. Right now, that would be me. I have a coworker who's in the office with me, generally speaking, the same hours. And then our two owners, Eric and Hunter, they kind of float in, but they're also there all night too. So it just depends. Around, we say, this one says 3:00 to 4:50. It's rare that we have a 3:00 PM class. It's usually the pints start at about 4:00 and go until 6:00, which are like the young kid, class one and class two, at about 16 kids. Then we move into the teenage class. Think of that as like elementary, middle-school teenager because we have those three brackets systematically. That's how it's always worked for us. And then the private lessons are just a little bit different because that's one-on-one instruction. So it's really just a completely different teacher who has nothing to do with the actual programming that's happening, going, finding a space, having them sing through something on a piano for a half an hour to an hour and then moving, moving about and doing a different one. At the bottom too, it says 3:00 to 9:00, like adult professional class. Again, I think this would be hypothetical as we, you know, with whatever the space allows. I don't think our professional programming is something that we would push here right away if there was a certain show that worked well for the space or something of the like, certainly. But that's a good example of the timeframe that our professional shows would rehearse. Usually, they go later into the evening. Pretty much our teens are the only ones that we take until 9:00 usually. It'll be like a 6:00 to 8:00 on a weeknight or it'll be a 9:00 to 12:00 on a weekend for the younger age bracket. But yeah, usually it's, if anything's going past 9:00, it's adults. It's the professional actors that are there and have to do it, you know, post-work. So. Okay, so then we move on to the weekend. That's where it gets a little layered, I should say. So private lessons can occur. Usually, nothing starts with us prior to 9:00 AM unless it was just like one staff member working on something like a set or lighting or sound if they needed to be in early or we were in there cleaning because there's an event coming later that day. 9:00 to 11:00 or 9:00 to 11:00, 9:00 to 12:00, we have young kids classes or a programming. But yes, just like this goes, it is, it's going to be staggered, especially to meet staffing demand. And then performances on a Saturday, usually for our elementary program because we get so many kids that sign up for it. We try to do two casts, right? So we like double-cast a lot of the roles just for more opportunities for the kids. So it turns into us needing to do four shows so that they each get two performances. So usually that means three on a Saturday. So it would be like 11:00, 2:00 and maybe 6:00 on a Saturday. We'll do a performance and that, those kids are there for that. They go home in between, they get something to eat, they come back, they do their show again. And then usually one performance on a s- And then usually one performance on a Sunday, always like a Sunday matinee if it's like a 2:00 PM, 2:00 PM, 3:00 PM. Usually nothing on Sunday evenings. It would depend on the kind of show. If it was like a rental event and it was like an outside renter, maybe. But usually Sundays are strictly matinees and that's just to be expected with theater stuff. That's what people are used to.
Sorry, I have a question on this slide. So this wouldn't be an every weekend example, right? This is like a peak performance weekend or would you anticipate that there's performances every single weekend at this level?
At the, at the level that we are functioning at in Brighton, usually we have something every weekend. That being said, audiences sizes vary. It depends. So like with kids' shows, audiences are big because there's a lot of little ones on that stage. For some of our professional shows, you're going to see much smaller audiences or like we have Jersey Boys opening this weekend and it's sold out, right? So it really just depends. But with a 300-seat venue, that's doable. That's only 50 seats less than what we're functioning at right now. So, I mean, it's something we're familiar with. I will say too, and this is just me hypothesizing because, you know, we don't have anything set in stone here, but if we were primarily focusing on student programming in this venue, there might be an off-weekend a month. I mean, sure, we might try to fill it with some kind of, I don't know, if a dance studio needed a rental or something of the like, we would try. But it, we would need to, at a jumping-off point, I think that's really ambitious. I mean, right now, we're four years in, four going on five years in at our space and so it's easy to keep things booked because we have repeat occurrences and it's very systematic for us.
And then just to confirm, I think I'm hearing this, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. We're not talking about you're moving from your Brighton location. This is a, would be a second operation here in Fairport. So would you be, is it the same teachers that are working between the locations? Just as we're thinking about realistically, what does this look like in terms of classes? How frequently classes can meet?
The first time that I got to actually see the venue and my boss, the owner, brought me over there, I said, "Oh, so we're going to need like a whole other staff," right? Now, that being said, I think a lot of us will pop between, but that also isn't doable. So I mean, it prob, we have a big core unit of teachers, especially because of summer camp season. So I think that it opens the opportunity for more full-time staff members, which is wonderful because, you know, in the arts, you're not used to finding a full-time job in that. I'm very lucky in that respect. So yes, I do think our staffing would have to expand to some extent, but it might not be with necessarily people that we don't already use in a smaller capacity, if that makes any sense. Awesome. Let's see what else I have to talk on here. Okay, so yeah, current student enrollment. I think this is a decent number. We have a ton of repeat students. So we see same faces program to program, especially because we tend to rotate through the age brackets. So if we have like an elementary, I can use last weekend as a good example. So we had an elementary program last weekend and then our next elementary program won't happen until sometime in the end of June. So they get, you know, May off, but then it comes back. So we do tend to see a lot of the same students show to show. They're just staggered. I think each age bracket probably gets about three to four programs a year with us. So yeah, once you, once you kind of combine all the repeats, that's probably a good number. It might be a little bit more if we counted in summer enrollment, just because we run things a little bit more simultaneously, especially between the two venues. And just to touch on that too, we would definitely not be closing the Brighton location. I think it serves a good purpose and it's a really, it's a happy medium location-wise off of 590 for families from both sides of the city to kind of come to. Also, we really are a staple tenant in that plaza. We're one of the only businesses that are bringing people into the plaza versus just employees. So I think they would be very sad to see us go and we've made, we've made a nice little home there. But we are always seeing the demand of the arts education with kids. It's, there's always more demand for it. There's always more opportunities to be had and so that's why that makes sense for us to, you know, be involved with this as long as, you know, we can, we can make it happen. I think the estimate is probably also a number that you and Eric have discussed. 300 students within the first year while people are getting used to us being there. And yeah, to get to 500 students to match the original location makes perfect sense. I think it will be very interesting to see how that shakes out, but I would hope that we would see a lot more families that come from the east side of the city. I grew up here in Fairport and graduated from here. So like I know kind of how it can feel when you're this far east side. It can feel like a little bit more isolated. So I hope we see more, you know, kids from Cannon, Dacquah and Victor and Fairport. And I mean, I know our Penfield and Webster kids, it would probably be easier to come here. So I know that there's a lot of pull with that. Special events. So I know I've been part of conversations on this with Jim when I had come in and I think that was part of the reason that Eric brought me into this conversation quite a ways back. I tend to at least coordinate or book and get contracts for all of our outside rentals or special events. The demand here in Fairport would be different, right? Because you guys already have so many built-in festivals and things that Brighton simply doesn't have. Canal Days, the Music Festival, which is huge, Oktoberfest, which I didn't even know happened here, but that's very exciting. And so we would, we certainly would love to work in collaboration with all of that. I know we had talked about with the Music Festival, that could be, that could be an opportunity to be that kind of venue. I know Eric had said in a letter that he sent out that his background is in event management. He has run fringe festival venues before, which I think is, it's a little bit longer of a festival than the Music Festival is, but like the same kind of thing. You're pulling outside renters into your space to kind of quickly put up that type of performance that way. Performances will be booked by OFC in the second-floor theater, like certainly you could do a wedding very easily, musicals, if there was some kind of orchestra, private recitals. We have, we have people that come to us from dance studios, but also like instrumental studios that they need to do a small piano recital and the stage works well for it. We would do that. Guest speakers is a good one too. We haven't had a ton of that, but certainly one-night-only events are easy for us to facilitate. Kids' birthday parties and other small events, that kind of leans into something we are already doing. So where we are in Brighton, in the plaza, we have our theater venue and then two doors down, we were renting a space to do all of our scenic build and painting and prop and set storage and costume storage. And we were only using like a quarter of the unit. It used to be a gigantic beers of the world in that plaza and we were only using a quarter of the unit. And so my boss was like, you know, we need a second rehearsal space and then I really should put something that makes money in the front of it. So we opened our cafe. That was about, that was 2021 now, so it's been about three years of the cafe being open full-time. But as a result, that allows us for things like kids' birthday parties are really easy to do in there, baby showers, we had a bar mitzvah. I've covered it, I've covered it all. And also like small concerts, right? Like little cabarets we've had our staff do just to fill weekends and like bring more people into the space to see it so that they even know it's there. And so certainly I think that that would be the goal here, right? Is to just fill this space. And that doesn't mean that it has to be a 300-person crowd. It just means if it's open and somebody wants it and it's the right fit and contractually and financially everybody can make it work, then we can do that. Oh, and now it's not about me anymore. So I'm happy to answer any other questions. I mean, I think I went over it quite a lot and like I had said earlier, OFC does do things. We do them in a big way, but we are very organized and we are very consistent. That's really been like the key to our success and the only reason that we're keeping so much going and that things have evolved so rapidly over four years. I know I had said to Jim when I first met him that my boss, Eric, is just not one to jump in unless he is going to do it to 110%. It's just not who he is as a businessperson and I think all of us take what we do really seriously and we believe in it. So yeah, I, that's my piece of this. I will hand that to you.
So for security, we highlighted in yellow some of the newer stuff that was not on the existing slide. Ways to be able to enter the premises, cameras, large events, having employees in the theater. You know, just there was some logistical questions on how things would operate, you know, alarm systems, things like that. Obviously contacting the police and fire department of events just so they know what's going on. Communication with the town. And some of the other stuff we've kind of already covered in this slide. Some locations on some of the security cameras and lights, just making sure that things are lit up and properly covered so that if something does go on, that we have footage. Some examples of some lighting, kind of matching with the style of the theater. This was a previous slide, some comments and questions about drop-off. I think we've kind of really hammered a lot of this stuff because that was a lot of the concerns on the last presentation that I gave. Yes, that's great. Yeah, if you noticed the second-to-last bullet, let's have Courtney talk about that a little bit.
So currently, we only have a beer and wine license at our theater. We've never even breached the liquor discussion. I just don't, we've never found it necessary. We have a company who has, they hold the liquor license at our location. So and they have their built-in staff, so they staff the bar. That being said, the bar is only open during events that we mandate them to be there for. So it's not like it's an open thing that people are walking into throughout the day. Additionally, it's something that I send them a list of events that are happening each month, mid-month and I notate the ones that they need to be there for. They can also do the, like if I have a private event like a baby shower or something like that, they are happy to staff those for me if I need it. But in terms of, from a theater perspective, they open about an hour before the show. They stay open through intermission and then they close. So it's not like the bar's open post-show, it's not. So it would definitely drive, if people were looking to spend time somewhere post a theater event concluding, they would have to go elsewhere. I do think most theatergoers are used to that. I don't know a lot of theaters who have their bar open post-show. Maybe music venues, yes, but not so much for theater productions, which is primarily what we would be doing.
Yeah, I thought that was a very important thing to talk about is getting a glass of wine at a show that maybe you're going to watch. Nothing where we're opening a bar, so I don't want that to be the impression. And obviously, we talked also about larger events, having the proper safety people in place to make sure things go smoothly. We want to make sure everybody's safe and without issues. Oh, let me go back. That just really jumped. Occupancy, I think, actually Chris, do you want to just talk about occupancy just a little bit more? I don't know, I think that was a little bit of a thing that...
I could go for a concession stand here at this board meeting, that'd be good. Right over there on the corner. Next time. So with the, you know, with the occupancy, the goal is to fit about 300 seats in the space on the main theater level. Right now, the, with the pews, that's about what the occupancy is there, a little bit more with the balcony. And the goal is to have a 300-seat venue or 300-ticket venue. And then the other 64 occupant load comes from, you know, approximately 50 people on stage and then 14 staff for ushers and, you know, door people and light people and whoever. So that's where the 364 comes from. On the lower level, you know, like here we have, you know, it's labeled classrooms and on the plan, it's labeled, one of the rooms is labeled the flex space, which was confusing. But the, you know, the flex space may be used for, you know, a classroom learning educational space, you know, during the training or education times. And then when there's a show, that might be used to kind of where people can gather inside the building as opposed to outside in the parking lot or in the yard. You know, after they grab a drink or at the concession stand, then they can go into that flex space and kind of hang out there. And that would be with like, you know, tables and chairs, you know, high-top tables and maybe there's, you know, a couch or something like that that's part of the education, you know, classroom seating area. So this is kind of an informal space of where people would hang out inside the building, inside the doors and not be outside.
And what would the lounge space be used as? So on the floor plan, it said lounge and flex.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's all the same space. So lounge being, that's where people would hang out indoors after they maybe grab a drink and they're waiting for the show to start or they're waiting for their kid to come down, you know, after the show before they go to the car, to their parking. So that's, that's kind of used as a lounge there.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask a couple more questions to figure out how we classify this.
And then, and then during, you know, during, you know, a classroom time, you know, during a weekday, that would be, you know, probably a, you know, a classroom or a breakout space or it could be a space where one of the, you know, the private lessons is kind of happening and someone's, you know, doing something there that's associated with education.
So when we're figuring out an occupancy and a parking requirement, we're looking at that highest use. So in this case, you know, we don't define lounge in the code. We, flex space, I think is a different definition than you might be using it as. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions so we can figure out what these spaces really are. So is the, would you liken the lounge space more to an assembly space, like a restaurant space or do you intend that it will not be used like that? Because I'm hearing, you know, someplace that people might hang out with a drink before the show, et cetera. And then also when it's not being used as like an assembly space, like a restaurant-type space, then it would also be used as classroom.
There's two different occupant loads. One is the classroom, which is 50 square feet per person. And the higher, higher use would be the unconcentrated seating, which would be the, you know, concession area before the show. So that's 15 square feet per person. So that's the calculation that we used on the floor plan that says, you know, what the occupant load for that room is, was based on the 15 square feet per person.
For the lounge?
For the...
And then for the flex space, I don't believe the same calculation was used.
That was, yeah, that was more classroom and that, and that being flexible is more, or it could be used as a classroom space for, you know, training or education or it could be used for, you know, stage production, like there's a, there's a production area and then a stage, theater production.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So the flex space would only be used for classroom and design stuff?
Yes, it's just too big to be used for like a concession area, it's not really attached to it.
Never lounge? As you define it.
It's a flexible space, so maybe if there's a need to use it.
But again, you know, I'm asking these questions just so I can figure out how we're going to assess what it is and, you know, it's also helpful for the planning board to understand how that first level is going to function. Is it fair to say that both of those areas are used as both the quote-unquote lounge and classroom?
You know, I don't, I don't know how OFC Theater might use it, but...
How we work it now, so it's different because the building is different, right? But when you come in our front doors, you're in our lobby area. When a show is happening, that's the area where patrons are held before they can go into their seats. That's where they come out for intermission and then that's where they would like, let's say it's an educational program, they're waiting for their kids in that area for their kids to come out afterwards. I'm assuming that this lounge space is that. Reason that it would be flexible in some capacity is most of the time, it's not going to be set up with tables, you know, 24 hours a day.
Right.
So I know we use our lobby for like the little kids' classes with the little pint-sized. They're always in the lobby because it's right inside the front door, parents can come quick, grab them. So we do use it as a flex space and the fact that it has a grand piano in it and so if somebody needed to do a lesson, they could. But always used as a lounge or like a lobby with food and drink.
Okay.
Well, I say food concessions pre-show. So it would be specific to like a lounge pre-performance.
Okay, that's, that's helpful for us to figure out then what, how we are going to deal with that space for parking.
For sure, because never during the week. We would never have it. Nobody would be staffed to run it or serve anything.
Right. And so when we're doing the parking and when we're calculating occupancy, it's okay, it could be used for these many things, but we're looking at, well, what is that highest occupancy load going to be? So that's why I'm asking these questions to figure out what is that space truly going to be? What are the assorted elements that could be part of it? But this is helpful for us.
Yeah, definitely. Because if it's the area I'm thinking of, it would make most sense for that lounge area to be that because the concession is... to be that because the the concession is right next to it.
So then essentially, when somebody is come, is there a box office? Because we've heard conversations about box office, but that was one of the questions that wasn't responded to. So is there a box office that's going to be located here?
So I, this is so funny because I sit here and I'm like, how is this going to affect me? So right now, how it works for us is, obviously, our box office is open online 24/7. You can go on and you can buy tickets to any of our shows online whenever you want. You're always going to have the people that do not like doing it online. So they call, generally speaking, 90% of the time, they just call. We have a phone system that is like transferable, it works on Wi-Fi, so it's transferable building to building. I could take my work home, my work phone home with me if I wanted to. I assume what would happen is, let's say I happened to be working my nine-to-five day at Fairport on a Wednesday, I can bring my phone with me and answer box office calls while I'm there. But our box office hours, we don't really consider them as open to the public to stop in and us to sell tickets. We just say, that is a timeframe, ours right now, Monday through Friday, 10 to 4:00. And that just means that somebody is going to be in that office to either pick up the phone immediately or answer your voicemail if you leave one.
Okay.
I do not anticipate having a full separate box office here. I believe it would all be run through our same website and our same phone lines. I mean, would we need some more backup with a third, oh, a second full-time venue? Yes, but it should all be through the same process.
Courtney, and this may help.
Yeah.
Generally, do people just bring electronic tickets or print a ticket out on their own printer? You're not like handing out hard copy tickets?
Very much depends. You're always going to have, so they, we have will call, which just means it's a table that's there, and people can walk in and say, hi, I got four tickets under...
And that's, and that's day or night of the performance, I apologize.
Correct, exactly. But we really don't have very many people that are walking in, like driving to the theater, coming in and having us print off their tickets. It just doesn't happen, it's more if they don't understand the process that something like that would occur. Or let's say they bought a, we also have the option on our website, if they're buying like 20 tickets to their kids' show, they can select to have us mail them to them. So then we would like sit at our box office printer, print out the 20 tickets and stick them in the mail. So I don't anticipate it being anything like I know RBTL is, where they actually have a box office staff that sits there as their part-time job. We don't, we don't do that. We're not, I don't, we're not big enough to do that, if that makes any sense. So, and parents know that they can also go look at the seat map and pick the seats that they want. So I don't anticipate anything other than it just being a different location that's reflected on our website and then us answering questions when people call.
Okay, can I ask you a couple more questions about the flow? Because we're, we're talking about the floor plan a little bit, and you kind of piqued my interest a bit. So someone comes, a show, the venue is open about an hour beforehand, and people come in, and there's, how many seats again in the theater?
300.
300. So 300 people come in, the doors don't open until when to the theater?
30 minutes before show is usual protocol. Doors open, ushers start helping people to their assigned seats.
Okay. So do you have any handle on how many people typically hang out in the lobby area before going to a show?
To be honest with you, I think our older clientele are the type to show up a little bit earlier, just because I think they think it will just take them more time to get situated, and they want to be, you know, at their leisure. Parents, most of the time, they're the ones coming in 15 minutes before, because they're there every other month to see another show, so they just come in later. Most people are going to be coming in between that 45 to five-minute mark. So I, I think it is very staggered. It usually is not anybody coming in and sitting that full hour, or that full 30 minutes before they can actually go to their seat.
Do you get a lot of people that come and hang out in the lobby and maybe get a drink? How does that work? Can you talk us through that?
It definitely does depend on the show. So for example, we have done Golden Girls parodies many a year, or when we did Rocky Horror Picture Show. You're going to get a different kind of crowd that comes in because they want their pre-show drink, right? But for student programming, not really. I mean, they know that they can come in, they can grab the drink, and they're just going to go sit and watch, and the show is probably 30 minutes to an hour long, right? Depending. So we really don't get a big, I don't think people come to the theater to linger in the lobby ahead of time, and certainly not afterwards. Because they also have intermission to like, grab a drink if they need it for the second half. It's just like not that party atmosphere, it doesn't at all remind me of like a bar.
Right, I'm not indicating that it's a bar party atmosphere, I'm, you know, asking for a little bit more information on that. So then at intermission, based on the current operations, about how many people go out to the lobby?
I would say for student shows, it's probably 50/50, just because they know that they're not sitting there for that long. When it's a professional show and the show is two and a half to, you know, two hours and 45 minutes long total, you might have a bigger chunk of the crowd go out and get a drink because they know they're about to go back in and sit for another 50 minutes. But I would really say it probably is 50/50 with the student programming, if not leaning a little bit more like 70 stay in the theater and just stay in their seat and 30 go out. It's also more for bathroom breaks than it is for anything.
So the potential expectation that maybe 150 people float downstairs?
I think that that's fair.
Okay.
And that's, that's if it's fully sold out, too, which we always ebb and flow with that.
Yeah, with, you know, with 150 people on an intermission down on the, on the lower level, there's about 500, 600 square feet of foyer and kind of entry space around the grand staircase. And then you have the 800-square-foot lounge area with the other 300 square feet that's, you know, adjacent to the concession area. There's the restrooms, which people will be going into the restrooms as well. So there is, you know, a couple thousand square feet for, you know, that 150 people that's spread out into.
And just so everybody can, when they're looking at this first floor, this is kind of for the people that are going to be going up to stage, they go up to backstage here, you know, they may be getting ready, maybe there's the next act going on. This front area on the first floor is for that, you know, concession slash, you know, lounge, just waiting for the show to come in. So just so when, when everybody's looking at, at the first floor plan, that's how it's divided up.
And also on the first floor plan, you can see in the, in the lower right, there's a, where it says it's an office. In front of that office, there's a single door with a little slider ticket window area. So again, if there was people that are coming in the front door, and there, there is some need for some show to have some sort of staff that is kind of, you know, giving people tickets or checking people, there is, that's kind of the, the staff, the staff area is right, right there, you know, inside the lobby of the front door.
That would be ideal. I know at Kodak, we're very much like a, we bring all our stuff with us type situation because we don't have like a box office setup at Kodak. So we just bring a six-foot table, and we have a ticket printer, and we plug it into our laptop and we go. I mean, yes, it would be nice to have that office space for, for performances with the ticket window, but if, that's when it would be used, at the actual show.
That's based on tables and chairs?
One other question, too, that someone on the board had about restrooms and what, whether there was enough restrooms for the code. And there, there is enough restrooms for the code, you know, for, for the code, there, you, you take, you take the total occupancy of the building, you split it in half, so for the, the upstairs for a show, 364 people, split that in half, half women, half men. For men, it's, you know, every 125 people is one water closet, and for women, every 65. So, you know, what, what the calculation comes out to is that we need, I think it's, we need, we need three, three men's water closets and four women's water closets for the, the upstairs and the downstairs, if they're both occupied at once, even though they're not planning on that. And then with, with men's, the, the code allows for up to 67% to be urinals instead of water closets. So the amount of, you know, amount of water closets and urinals that are on the plan are to code, so whoever had that question, that's taken care of.
I have a quick question on that since we have Mark here. So when you actually calculate, like, the amount of both parking and water closets, you have to, you have to take the overall occupancy of the building, not just the first floor or the second floor, even if you're not using them. Am I correct on that? So we, you know, 364 plus 213 is really our number that we're going with to determine the amount of park, parking and the amount of...
Yeah, you would use the total number for everything.
Right.
It's hard to say just because they're not planning to use it for that, that that's a valid reason to make it an exception. So I would consider it the entire occupancy.
Yeah, and the way, when I was doing the calculation for the number of fixtures on the lower level, because it has a different, a more, more stringent code because it's classroom space, so for classroom space, it's one water closet per 50 people, not per 125 males or 65 females. So there's two different calculations done based on what the occupancy is, and then you, you take the, however many water closets are required for each one, it might be 1.4 on this floor for this gender and 1.2.8, and then you add all those up, and then at the end it'll tell you, and we, we need 2.8 men and 4.15 women water closets.
Is that, I, now I'm confused a little, Chris. We talked about it being used as like a lobby area, but you mentioned classroom? So is the amount of bathrooms, it's just based on the occupancy number, not necessarily the specific use?
Yes, so this, the, the first floor occupancy that I, that I added on top of the, the theater occupancy, so I added both of those together, even though they, I don't think you'll have people in the basement running classes while there's a, a show going on. But if you were to add those up, then it's seven, seven water closets total for the building.
Okay.
If you have the, if the downstairs, again, is like a lounge area and that's the highest, the highest use, because it's more intense, more, more people than classroom space, at that point, those people that are coming from the show, you're not having an extra 100 people in the, in the downstairs while you have an intermission upstairs. So you wouldn't count those at the same time, but I would count the, the classroom education space, because you could technically have, you know, classrooms, you know, going on while, or, you know, training, you know, going on while you have a show upstairs. Or even have, I mean, I guess if you had like, yeah, a breakout group of, you know, 50 people doing something downstairs while you have a show of 250 people upstairs, I mean, there's different options, but the, the highest use that I would, the way I would calculate it would be the, the theater occupancy for the, the upper level, and then the classroom occupancy for, you know, the, the full downstairs level.
The full downstairs.
And there's actually one extra fixture than what the code requires.
Second floor, I don't know if this changed actually since, but we decided to wing out the elevated stage area and bringing the org in and everything up on stage. This kind of gets into Mark's department that we're looking forward to working with him to finalize all the drawings, to get construction underway. You see the squiggly lines? Those are curtains. The backstage, you can see the left of the stage and, and the goal is to replace the pews with actual seats, because it's a lot easier to, tickets and, and what, more of a comfortable viewing, so if you need a pew, let me know. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Hey, Jim, are you gonna, when you build those, are, are you building the floor up when you put the chairs in?
Mark brings up a question. We have to finalize that as far as talking to Eric, but what Mark is referring to is elevating the back section in order to have some better seating. So right now, I'd say that would be amazing to do. A lot of it is going to be maybe contingent on budget at first. The, the first rendition, maybe just getting it going, may just be, they have these really nice chairs that interlock, and that may be at first, before we start dropping, I don't know how much it would cost for nice theater seats. So it's a good question that, when we get to the, to some of those things that we'll have to discuss, but yeah, it's, I think, as much as it's hard to say, but the pews may not work as well as a seating for the long-term future of this theater.
I have a question about traffic circulation and parking. One of the things I don't recall maybe talking about in the past or, or hearing about just now was, what consideration has been given to kind of parking on the grid? I'm thinking about available parking on streets like Perrin, in terms of an option for Perrin pickup and drop-off. Just curious if you could talk about that as an option in addition to parking lot space.
I guess I'm confused. You're saying Perrin drop-off?
Yeah, and I guess I should clarify. So something I, I thought I heard from, from Courtney and maybe saw in some of the materials was this idea that perhaps, instead of driving through and dropping off, that there might be akin to what I understand you've all done at Kodak.
Yes.
Maybe parents being encouraged to park in nearby lots and then accompany their children on foot to drop off.
Correct. That is the goal. I mean, if there's a small group, it probably is fine, but any larger-sized group that they're going to have, parking is going to be required in walking the student there. We do not want to overwhelm that space, getting off, traffic, we're trying to disperse, we have multiple areas that parents can go and park, walk in. I bet you for love of the littles, the parent will probably just stay, maybe downstairs in the lounge area, have a Wi-Fi, and then when they're done, they can leave, so...
Yeah, I think, I think we're saying the same thing there. The question I had was, what, in addition to, right, you have the opportunity for parking in lots.
Yep.
Public lots, maybe lots you have agreement by, I would think you would also have the availability of some street parking on nearby streets. I'm just wondering if that is at all part of the parking plan or potential communication you might have, in that I think some nearby streets might be closer. I'm just curious if that's been part of what you've talked about.
Right. I would say, and I don't know if Courtney, you have something to say, but if you're familiar with the area, maybe yes, but I think most parents that maybe don't would probably just go to the lots.
So at Kodak, it's different because there's, I mean, if any of you are familiar with West Ridge Road, there really are not neighborhood streets that you would park on, so they really have to go in that lot across Ridge, and then they stop at the traffic light, they walk their kid into the building. But at Lyric, that was really the only option, so it was like if you knew your way around than you would. I have to assume it would be something similar around here, especially if you knew the area and were comfortable doing it, you park your car and you walk them in. But I think in our actual parking plan, I feel like we would, like designate people to the lots because it seems like more of a, a specific point.
Yeah, you, you have that, that flexibility and that freedom to be able to do that here.
For sure. It's very...
Yeah, to sort of continue that, would be, from a DOT's perspective, the, I know there's no stopping right now along Main Street in that, on the frontage. There may be a, a question that, and, and we don't want traffic to be stopped on Church or Main Street there, so you may have to, to install some signage to, to accommodate or to, to encourage that and to, to label that, reinforce that.
We have, yeah, we have done at Kodak, too, because there is a, there's a small employee lot next to the building, and as a result, there's like almost a loop that you pull in to get through, like the security scan gen. And, I mean, we have had to put staff members out front there during summoners to be like, no, 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 we can't stop here. So like, it's not anything that we're not used to. I mean, we would just want to make sure that we were noticing patterns and eliminating them.
Yeah, I've, I've seen places where they'll use a sandwich board signs and say like, you know, Uber drop off, Uber lift, whatever, go to X Y street or X Y parking lot for those, those directions. The other thing I don't, I don't think, that, that I certainly haven't heard, but I, we know it's inherent, is do we have an idea of how many, what's the, what's the internal capture market here? Like, how many people are we already assuming are in the village, they're already patronizing some of the other establishments, they're parking at wherever they're, so it's a, it's a park once sort of mentality. People are already going to dinner at McConry's or whomever down at the Box Factory, and now they're going to walk up here for that performance and then walk back.
And likewise, if I could tag on to that, the idea, too, are there patrons at your Brighton location who are Fairport residents that you think might walk? who are Fairport residents that you think might walk?
Correct.
Were this an available option to them in, in the village?
We have a ton of Fairport students. It's easier for me to like to designate that way because I, I know the students more than I look at like the box office records. But I mean, certainly I probably could pull a report by zip code if I went into the box office system just to see. But no, I feel like that is a good point that at, because of just the nature of what the Village of Fairport is, that people who are already coming here and know that they can go out to dinner right down the road and then walk up. Or they live around here and so they just leave their car home and they do that, especially during good weather? That's entirely possible. I feel like Brighton's not far enough away where it's going to be a completely different demographic. I think it'll just be spread.
Yeah, that zip code information is, is very useful too. I would even encourage on, on that front, you know, if you're thinking about carpooling, being able to certainly strongly encourage that, you know, in those email blasts as well. Has there been any indicator, any, any thoughts for, in, in the event of those big performances, shuttle service or any sort of, if, if there's some sort of overlap with the various events that might go on on a weekend down here, you know, potentially doing an offsite shuttle service? Like we've seen during canal days where people will park up at Brooksville or, or other school areas and get shuttled in, get dropped off at the, the Main Street, you know, four corners, for example, anything like that?
That was discussed a little bit. Yeah, I think, I think things will evolve. I think having some key locations for people to park, but the carpooling I think is huge. A lot of it's just communication. But I'm sure there's, someone was just telling me that there's a person that somehow goes around and shuttles people from one side of Main Street down to the other. So maybe partnering up with them. I think there's a lot of opportunities, a lot of spinoffs. I think what this overall performance center is going to bring is just a really great, kind of really piggyback on what Fairport's become as a hub for, you know, just entertainment and the arts and, you know, community and walking the area, going into a store. And that's what we're really hoping, that there's a lot of commerce generated by this abandoned building that needs to get renovated desperately and turning it into something that I think is going to be a crown jewel of the village. So, so yeah, exploring things like that. I think there's opportunities, you know, yeah.
And you know, another thing too, I, I've had some experience with similar, you know, events. And you know, one of them being the, the Temple Theater downtown. And you know, the, the parking, when everyone leaves, you know, everyone is kind of, there's all these parking, you know, cars coming out of parking lots or always trying to leave, you know, at the same time. And all it takes is one person making the left when there's lots of traffic to then basically back up traffic for ten minutes. So, you know, having just like the A-frame signs that might be used in, you know, in front of a big, you know, and, and before a big show, that could just be flipped around and it might say right turn only. So you just kind of have one of those, then people know on the, you know, the two corners where they can exit out, right turn only, keep the traffic flowing. So if, if stuff like that is needed, you know, because you find out that, you know, someone making a left-hand turn is blocking traffic a lot, maybe, you know, things like that get adjusted.
Yeah, I would definitely strongly encourage that, especially, well, I mean, the, the events occurring fortunately in an off-peak time, at least on the weekends, you know, especially when you're getting out in, in an evening hour, that's an off-peak. But yeah, that's, being flexible for that, that's another good, strong recommendation for sure.
Yeah, and to, again, piggyback on, on David, who's far more talented than I am, so I'll just hop on when he's got good ideas. As between differing lots too, if you have an overflow situation where maybe a first lot has become full, what's your availability to respond to that in some way, whether it's with additional signage? Or for large events, do you start thinking about whether it's a staff member at OFC or someone you work with or whoever as a parking attendant, just to monitor and be a part of that as it's, as it's evolving? Because I think having some lines of communication to understand what's happening and being able to respond to it would be important.
Yeah, and we're bringing this up, it's just parking has been a sensitive issue for the village, as you've probably heard and are aware of over the last, you know, handful of years. So it certainly is a, and, and the parking study does answer a lot of questions that people did have over the years. So it's a good baseline to go off of.
Yeah, and, and I will say candidly, and I, I think you would know this from our last conversation, what has given me and continues to give me heartburn about the property is the potential for traffic congestion at that intersection. Hearing some ideas about what a solution would look like, particular parent drop-off of, of kids. This idea that you would have maybe twenty kids coming in for a class on a, on a, a property that they're saying maybe can accommodate twelve cars at a time. That leaves me the immediate question, what about the other eight cars? Where do they back up? Where do they go? Where do they sit? How are those children moving around safely? What's the lighting like for them? How are we making sure that, and, and then for all the children who aren't participating, who are just out and about in this community? How do we make sure it's safe for them? So hearing some of the ideas about how you might do parent drop-off in a way that does not require the vehicles to trans, to, to go through that little L-shaped lot is, is, is helpful. I think for me in many ways of, of understanding alternatives that maybe I hadn't thought through before.
And I don't think it's necessary. And I think what's helpful is because we've already had that system at the, at the Kodak venue and they're used to hearing from us that they have to do something like that. It won't be, it won't be foreign to them either. So I hope, and it's just, it's a matter of over-communicating it, right? So, and we will, we will throw it in their face in all ways, shapes and forms.
I know that Heather and I keep going back and forth, but that's, that's, speaking for myself here, there's, there's definitely been some revelations that knowing the experience and, and, and sort of foreseeing some of the challenges that you've, you've had elsewhere, tackling them, addressing them in a, in a solvable way, in a, in a practical way, certainly helps to answer a lot of questions going into this evening and now.
I want to be thoughtful about how I ask it because I'm, I'm sensitive to business dynamics and contracts and absolutely all of that. But help me reconcile a little bit, hearing from Courtney and all of you, the helpful things you've said today with the, the email we, we do have that's very clear about kind of the limits of where you all are in the process of negotiating as business partners, which again, I get. I mean, help us for the benefit of understanding where we are on that process.
It's a great question. Eric's been very patient. At our last meeting, I was asked to get a professional, Chris, I hope you were impressed, because I was. That it took a lot of work to get a lot of the extra information, work with Eric to try to get everything. They're definitely on board, but we need to get through this process so we can start getting to construction. There's a lot of work. There's big investments that need to be made. This is the first obstacle to get through. I think with what we've been already talking to Mark about, with Chris already present, you know, I think it's just Chris getting the thumbs up to put, you know, pencil to paper and, or at least a mouse to computer screen, drawings that we can get. But yes, right now, it hinges on us getting through and to be able to bring this great opportunity to Fairport. I don't think OFC will wait forever. I am very concerned that just they are willing to make this into a great second location. And I think we have an amazing opportunity in front of us. I think you guys kind of heard my plea at the last meeting that just, it's very anxious. I've invested a lot of money in this property and I plan to do even more to renovate it. But we need tenants and it can't just keep being vacant. So, so right now, once we get approval, we'll be signing a more of a lease. Right now, it's just an intention. There has been a deposit given. And so once we get a lease, we'll build the suit. And their OFC will be taking care of certain things that they, experts in like lights and sound. I obviously have the construction background to do the build-out. But, so we got an agreement to do that. So, so yes, this is, it's very serious. It's just, you know, one step has to happen before the next can be taken.
I understand that. I appreciate you taking the time to answer. And I know we're all on the same page about being as concerned about, about safety and doing what's right by everybody, which I'm sure you can appreciate has been a priority, I think of a lot of board members.
I'd like just to add a little bit of that. I, I helped Eric build his current theater and the cafe over in Wynton Plaza. And that's in town of Brighton, so there's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, fire marshal code stuff that we had to do there. One of the things that I like about projects like this, and I've, I've been involved in lots of design-build projects and, you know, adaptive reuses of buildings over twenty-five years. And when you have a tenant that is going to be putting in a lot of money into the, into the property and then you have the owner that's putting in money into the property, those tenants and, and landlord relationship that usually lasts a long time, as opposed to like a landlord building a white box and then people kind of move in and just kind of put their desks and their furniture in there. So like with OFC Theaters, I think in their current space in Wynton Plaza, you know, I think they, they have two hundred fifty chair, seats or something. I think that was like a three hundred fifty thousand dollar bill just for the chairs. You know, and then, you know, with the, with the lighting and the theater curtain, you know, the theater curtain fabric is, you know, is, is special fabric that's good for, you know, acoustic control, is good for, you know, fire and smoke control. So, you know, there, there's a lot of money, all the lighting, everything. So it's nice when you, when I see projects where the landlord and the tenant, they both have, you know, skin in the game and it makes it so it's, it's really like a, a long-lasting relationship as opposed to having, you know, a, a tenant move in, you know, some other business moves in for, you know, twelve months and then leaves. So it'll be nice to have that relationship.
Thanks for adding that.
I was, yeah, sure. So Jill, you know, obviously it seems like OFC is very capable of managing this and doing this in a way that, you know, that seems well thought out and nice presentation and everything of that nature. But are we approving this with kind of the condition that OFC goes and runs it? Or are we changing the use and then whoever comes in can use it as a theater? And we just hope that they do all the same nice things?
So, you know, as it's been described, OFC does not have a signed contract. There's a letter of intent. So when you're reviewing this, you should be looking at it as anybody could go in there. Tomorrow, OFC could say, no, we've changed our mind. So you're looking at it as that anybody could utilize that space. It does, it's not necessarily tied to OFC. So you're hearing a perspective from OFC. I do want to remind the board that there were several letters that went to the applicant, that there are remaining questions that haven't been responded to.
Yeah.
So if you want to go through those and perhaps we could get answers this evening. And I believe that those start.
And I can do that. Let me just finish with mine.
On page three of my memo. So when, and any application that you're entertaining, and we talked about this before, Peter could wake up tomorrow and decide he's not going to rent boats and kayaks. So when you're looking at a particular application, you're thinking about the use, not the operator.
Sure. So would it, would the prudency then for the board to condition this with all of the things that OFC was proposing they would do as a condition that you would have to do? Or how, how would, because I mean, unfortunately, I don't have like a succinct plan in front of me of this is how we're dressing it black and white.
Correct. And, and I, I, I think that that's probably necessary. You know, this is the first time that OFC has been present, this is the first time I've met someone from OFC and of course, the board has met someone from OFC. So it may be prudent to require that information to be presented in writing so that you know exactly what is going to occur and that provides you the opportunity to move forward.
Yeah, I'm not struggling with the capacity of the team to do it. I'm struggling with how I quantitatively say you've got to do it under those parameters. Because right now it feels like, hey, you know, great, hopefully everything works out and then, you know.
Understood. And, and we've heard, you know, I've taken a lot of notes and we've heard a, a lot of new information that I, I think it's, in writing, it'll help you better understand.
Oh, I couldn't give you all the conditions right now. It would take me an hour.
Right, because I, I've, I've written down a couple of conditions myself, you know, some things that we've heard this evening. And it's entirely up to the board how you want to proceed. But we've heard a lot, but there's, nothing has been presented in writing.
Is this the first time you've heard all that?
Correct. It's, it's the first time for me. There still remain a lot of gaps in the information and perhaps it's an opportunity for the applicant to fill in those gaps that have been, the information's been requested several times. So if you want to start going through that and we can at least have the conversation on page three, I mean, that's entirely up to you.
Let me finish my questions if that's okay. So we, we do have to give a parking waiver for this, correct?
Correct. And I, I, as the memo states, I'm not sure what that number is. It could be a minimum or a maximum.
Okay, because that's, that was the other thing I was going, I'm, I'm with you on that where I'm not clear. But you want me to run through these questions here?
Sure.
All right. So submitted floor plans do not match up. It's now unclear exactly what the first floor will be used for. Floor plans note that there's a lounge flex space. Description discusses classrooms. Do, do we feel like we have some clarity on that, although it would be nice to have it provided in writing? Do you feel like you've got that or?
So I guess how I would look at it, and Ryan, is there any chance you can bring page? Twenty-two, I believe it is?
Are you asking this in the?
I'm asking this from, from the.
In the subject of occupancy?
For the parking calculation. So, you know, there is an occupancy posting, but there's also parking requirements that are based on our code that don't always match up with what that occupancy posting is.
Is the parking based on occupancy tied to use?
Not always. Not always.
Okay.
In some instances, it's based on the square footage. And that's why I'm saying that it's difficult for me not knowing and having differences on floor plans, exactly what that space is, is being for.
Yeah, I don't know how to give you a parking waiver if you don't give me a number.
Correct.
You know.
What I'm hearing, and I guess if the applicant wants to just confirm this, is that I would assess this under likely the restaurant requirement. Because it's going to be, the highest use of that is going to be mimicking folks standing around, potentially tables and chairs.
Right, which is a fifteen square feet per person.
For the occupancy, but the parking. I'm going to do this on the fly here. So the occupancy will help us with that. The.
Joe, can you just educate me quickly? Do they have to be based on the same thing, the parking and the requirement with respect to the, the? I'm not getting myself mixed up. Does the parking and whatever the other thing that we're analyzing right now, do those have to be based on the same calculation?
The use.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Because to me, and I, I apologize, you are absolutely the expert on this component of it. But it seems to me to say it's one thing for a restaurant for parking and the demands associated with that. When the overlap between the use of the space as parking for a restaurant here overlaps so much with the other usages of the space.
In terms.
Like you're not, you're not arriving to just attend the restaurant in the lounge.
Yep. So if you're familiar with our, our parking requirement, obviously our parking code never anticipated something of this magnitude, right? And so when we're looking at how do we figure out parking, we try to liken things. And that's why it's helpful if terms that are used on floor plans are similar to or close to or exactly what we have in our code. So when we look at restaurant and diners, it's one space, space for every four persons based on the occupancy load. So there's a connection between the occupancy number and then that parking requirement. In other instances, we also have flex space, which is a different definition that Chris is referring to for this. Flex space is one per three hundred square feet. But that's where the definitions come in to understand fully what that use is. So we've had the conversations of classrooms and now I'm hearing that it's actually going to function more like a lobby. So I think it would be fair to, if we're going to have tables and chairs, the closest thing perhaps is restaurant and one per four.
Sure. I mean, I think at the end of the day, what I want to know is the number. And I want that memorialized because we fought so hard to get a parking study done for ten years and finally got it done. And now we have quantifiable data.
The parking study isn't the issue here.
No, no, but I'm saying like if we don't have the right number, how do we analyze parking in the village? Like we have to, we.
Correct. And, and, and that's why based on the information that we had, I provided a, from what I could understand of what was submitted, a minimum and a maximum.
Sure.
To provide you some sort of idea.
Yeah, and I, you know, Jim, I don't think it really is a big deal either way. You, you need a waiver. We're going to give you a waiver. You got to have one. Other, you know, like that, it's not, I just think that to have that number correct is important to the future of the village. To overlook that then, you know, kind of shorts our parking calculations in the future, one way or the other. I think it's important to make sure that we're accurately counting that.
I think for the process, we want to have an accurate number, right? Whether it's four thousand or forty.
If you're analyzing whether we need more parking or not, I think you, you should have the numbers, you know, as accurate as possible from all the businesses, so.
I'm, I'm so sorry to keep interrupting, Joe. Don't we do ranges on parking? Isn't that something we, we have done in the past?
That to me is not good practice.
Okay.
When you're doing a waiver. When you're doing a waiver for a board, you should know exactly what that number is so that you have a handle on. We're going to waive all of these spaces. You know, right now onsite they have five. So it's, we're going to subtract whatever and say, okay, this is the number of parking spaces that we're willing to waive for this particular use.
Historically, we've done kind of what Jill said with the largest, heaviest use.
And that has been in relation to, we, we don't know what those uses are going to be specifically cannery, right? So they came in, they said, hey, we're going to be a mix of things. And so that's where you talk about, okay, the highest parking requirement would be this. We're going to call all of those spaces this.
And that's exactly what we're talking about doing here.
So this is, I'm hearing what the space will be used for and matching it up with what our requirements are.
And I think it will be, sorry, it'll be helpful to see the calculations just on a, you know, in a table. Kind of a rundown through all those occupancy spaces, adding them up. It will be really helpful to just see, see that on a spreadsheet or.
Do we already have that number?
We do, yes.
Yeah. We, we do have that number in one of the slides.
But it, it's based on what? Because we've had conversations that flex space isn't how, the way you're choosing to use it isn't how we've discussed parking.
Is that number based on the most demand?
It was based on your, on your, your calculation, but I think it was based on square footage.
Your occupancy wasn't correct on that calculation. You came up with a hundred and forty spots, but your occupancy was conflicted with a later slide. So I think that's where, you know, which one is it? From my perspective. So I think sorting that out.
There's the occupancy for the fire code, like the three hundred sixty-four people and then the hundred, which is for the restroom calculations. And then there is the, the parking calculation, which was from the email that you sent me with that data. I think it was the three hundred square feet for the per, per parking space for the, like the flex space area, if I remember correctly.
Right, but it's not being used as flex space. So when, and we're referring to page six. How I came up with these numbers is I use the exact labels and try to liken that. Because it's not for me to figure out what you, you actually want to propose, right? This was your application. So in this case, I tried to figure out what was for the proposal and come up again with a minimum and maximum based on what I could figure out. But now we're hearing that this space on the first floor is really going to function more like a lobby with tables and chairs at its highest occupancy. And also his classroom with perhaps a lower occupancy. But for, is that correct?
Yes, but it would only be at the high occupancy when there's a show.
But for parking, parking doesn't care if it's only for one hour.
But would you count?
We're looking at that highest.
Would you count park, would you require parking spaces for the three hundred seats for the show? And then at the same time require parking spaces for a hundred people in the basement that are getting a drink during intermission?
I would. I would. And the reason being is.
But we would never have that many people in the building.
Understood. But we also, you know, when we were assessing parking for like a restaurant, somebody could say, well, I'm never using all, nobody's ever at my restaurant. It's never full. It doesn't matter. We still have to have that same assessment where if we have a retail space and they say, oh, it's, I never have this many people. I mean, this is the same argument I've been hearing for twenty years. We never have this many people. And the code unfortunately doesn't say, well, you never have this many people, so you can adjust it. That's where the ability for the planning board to take into consideration all of these things come in with a waiver. But unless they know what that true requirement is based on the code, they're unable to provide an accurate number for that waiver. Does that make sense?
So would that, would that mean then that for being held to having, providing parking or a parking waiver for full occupancy of both the theater and the lounge area, does that mean that they can occupy the lounge area at the same time as the theater show is going on?
They could theoretically. And so that's part of it too, is that to hear within the application that those two spaces would never be occupied, that doesn't do a lot for us because that's not something we're going to be able to control.
Yes, that's why I, I just calculated the more, you know, I guess lenient way. So if this is the way that you want to calculate it, then we'll just have to adjust those numbers.
Well, it's the way all codes do it as far as zoning codes. So if you could take a look at that and ensure that the space, and, and we can discuss that further based on how you're going to use it. But again, I, I think that probably using that restaurant calculation would probably be best.
I would just caution though, because you can get into double counting when you get into that.
Oh, I understood. I understood, but that's the whole, what we're doing is giving you a number.
I, I get it. I do parking studies every day.
I, yep, just let me explain. So we're giving a number and the planning board and its reasoning is going to be able to elaborate on things like that. So I get the double counting, but when we're calculating the parking for a space, we're saying this is what it is. And then the planning board and its evaluation can say, we hear that this is the parking. We are willing to waive it for the following reasons. We know that the spaces aren't going to be used at the same time. We know that, you know, there, the lobby area will be used as a lobby for X number of percentage of time during that period. And the primary, the primary use of it will be classroom. So I'm giving you just a number and it's for the planning board then to say, well, we hear that number, but the reality is. And that's where the conversation about double counting comes from.
Okay, yeah, I heavily caution because we're now breaching into parking theory. And this is where, this is why the conversations around parking requirements come up time and time again. So.
I, I completely understand that.
And that doesn't account for potential reductions that could occur.
I understand that. The code, codes are limiting, codes are very black and white. And so that's why the ability is for the planning board to take a look at these things and evaluate and make that justification. So I hear what you're saying about parking theory. I'm stuck with the code. The code doesn't give me the ability to say, well, I'm double counting or I'm doing this, I'm doing that.
Just so that I can make sure the applicant's got clear instruction, I think about what the deliverable is being requested. Would it be appropriate for them to do the counting based on the way you've suggested? But maybe include a bullet pointed list of the considerations the board might have as they put together a waiver analysis like the concerns about double counting and the uses of the space. Would that be a fair way of?
Absolutely.
Talking about it.
Great recommendation. Okay, let me keep rolling here because I got through one. Okay. There are two spaces on the first floor plan that are noted as theater, production, storage, theater, production. It's assumed that both spaces are storage. On another submitted floor plan, one space is noted as shop. Additional explanation is required to understand these uses. I feel like you kind of touched on that. Are we good on that, Jill? Feel comfortable with the response so far on that?
For the two spaces?
Yes, lower level, west side.
If we can just ensure that the labeling is accurate on all the floor plans as to what it's going to be, so it's going to be theater, production, storage, space?
Yeah, and both, you know, the way they use that, the similar room at the OFC Theater now. It, you know, it's, it's a, it's a flexible room, but they, they'll, they'll bring in, you know, a couple of sheets of plywood. They'll bring in, you know, they'll have a jigsaw. They'll, they'll cut some shapes, you know, trees. They'll, they'll paint it, you know, put some tarps on the ground and paint it. And then they'll end up, you know, making, you know, some set design stuff. Then they might have, you know, some, you know, some rolling, you know, like, you know, clothes hangers and stuff that, that are for different kinds of, you know, costumes. So all that kind of stuff is just moved around, shuffled around, you know, created, you know, modified for the next show. So it's just kind of, it's where like the, the staff works and I assume some of the students get involved too with, you know, painting some of the set design and whatnot. But it's, it's, it's basically, it's a, it's a shop, a production, you know, storage for the, the stage, you know, props and stuff. And that, that square footage that is on, is on the plan for the space, that's similar to what they have for their theater, you know, over at OFC. It's about the same on a square footage.
Okay. The three thousand square foot kitchen is not three thousand square feet. We need details provided to its use that rolls into the next bullet, which talks about the waste bin enclosures, but also brings up grease disposal management, things like that. So it'd be good to have a little bit of a description of what is done in that kitchen. Fryers, no fryers. Hood, no hood. All those things, you know.
I was going to say, I did never think that there was the intention of any sort of like fryers in here, right? That, no, I didn't assume.
Yeah.
I think it would be like drinks dumped down a drain. Like I don't think it's.
Sure.
I think it's where Courtney's going to put her lunch that she brought home from dinner previous night and then is just going to warm it up in a microwave.
Perfect.
That's, it's not like, we're not running a restaurant out of there.
Okay. Yeah, I think those things though are important. Just, you know, here's what we're doing there.
And even like the OFC Cafe started out without cooking equipment. It was, it was just um panini machines and countertop.
We still don't have fryers or a hood.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Just, I think that's just important to get in writing for me. Here's what the program is. And then waste bin enclosures, size, it seems like you feel they're adequate. You addressed that. Adequate number of restrooms, we discussed that. I think, you know, just going through based on the proposed use and occupancy, ensuring that calculation would be helpful for all of us up here. Heavy fire soundproof curtains will be installed. However, no details provided such as location of the curtains, curtain material or sound transmission class. I did think you had the squigglies on the drawing. They showed where they were. I think if you could just get us a spec on that.
Well, those, so those are not sound curtains. Those are draped. So sound curtains are typically installed near windows or other openings.
Oh, so you're talking about sound attenuation products?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Yeah, there'll be two different ones. The sound and fire, they're all fire retardant, but the sound would be more on the stained glass windows. Where for the, the curtains, they'll be fire retardant, but they're not sound.
So, and I just, you know, want to reiterate what Joseph mentioned. If this could also, you know, we're having this discussion here and if you could also provide it in writing, I think that'll be helpful. Because keep in mind the Stafford workers on the website and we want to make sure that the public has all this information as well.
Yeah, so if you could provide just a sketch that shows here's where they are, here's the size they're going to be, and here's the specification for the product, that'd be great.
I mean, most of the time, so with like things like the, you know, the, the curtain specification, at this point, we don't know what that would be or what the exact fabric would be, that the color, the style.
I don't necessarily need any of that. I don't even think that's in our purview. I think to say that it's going to have an STC rating of fifty-four, you know, something like that, it's going to cover the whole window, you know?
Yes, so. Yes, so, so code is like in between like STC forty-five and sixty-five typically for those things.
I just guessed the number by the way, so that.
You're, you're right on the mark there. So, but.
I think that's my dishwasher, so.
When all the drawings go to mark for the review, you know, looking at, you know, the egress and the fire alarm and all that kind of stuff. You know, that, those specs, you know, the, the anchoring of how the, how the curtain is, how like the structure, all of that is.
Yeah, I don't need any of that. Just broad, broad brush strokes that we know that the neighbors are concerned about sound.
Correct.
You've given me something to say, okay, they're going to put up this in the windows, covering the windows completely and it has a rating of this. You know, it's more of like I did my job up here type of thing, you know?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, OFC probably has, Eric, I'm sure has a spec of his curtain.
Of the main curtain on stage? I'm sure.
Not on the main curtain, on the stage. On, yes, the windows.
The window.
What windows would you be referring to though in our current state?
Don't you have a curtain along the front, the front, in between the cafe and the curtain, certain block area?
Heather, if you can get a little background. Perfect. You've been doing so good tonight.
Well, it's, just tell us how you're going to block the sound with a curtain. That's it.
That's fine, that's fine.
And, and, and tell us what that, that weight is, what that attenuation will be, the detail. You can sort that out and figure out how you're going to do that.
Okay. Proposal notes, potential for one-way traffic as requested by fire chief, but no definitive answer been provided. You discussed that it's not solely up to you. It's potential coordination with the neighbor.
Yeah, you need to have, you need to ask the question of the neighbor and then provide an answer so we can deal with that.
Yeah, I think we, we talked about that. Jeff and I talked about the, and it just didn't seem to make sense that to create a one-way just for their tenants and other people. So I don't think we're.
So for now, would you say it's not going to happen?
It's not, yeah. It's how, it is how it is.
Perfect.
So real quick, the, the important part with that is the fire chief made that, he didn't just come up with that just because. It's because they have a specific process for traffic jams on South Main Street and what, how they deal with it. So if there was going to be traffic backed up because of the theater, they wanted it in a specific spot. And that's why the one-way transmission was of traffic.
So that's a big deal. So hearing that, for us to give you an approval and get you going on this, which I think we all collectively would like to do, you got to get that worked out with the fire chief of what the deal is. Because he's going to tell you, my truck's this big and I got to go here and I got to do all that. And I know you're constrained with, with Jeff. So I would recommend having a conversation with him and getting that worked out. Because it's hard for us to give you an approval with an outstanding life safety issue, especially coming from the fire chief. That's kind of like a big deal. So we got to find a way to do it, okay? But you got to have those conversations and get him on board with what the program would be. So we can give you an approval, okay? All right. Parking spaces are shown and drawn to scale. However, there's nothing that dictates how student patrons or those with different abilities will be dropped off, picked up either during performance, camp, lessons, et cetera, to ensure that vehicular pedestrian traffic on both South Main Street and West Church Street will not be impacted. I think we've hit on that quite a bit. I do feel like putting that all in writing, black and white, is super important. Loading spaces for theater equipment, food, beverage concessions have not been shown nor discussed in the proposal. You hit on that, but once again, also please put it in writing. Documentation notes that there will be other events at the location. How does catering work? Food, beverage, dropped off. Once again, I think you hit on it. I just think, you know, same thing. Here's the different events we'll do. We're not going to exceed these capacities. Here's how we'll take care of loading, drop off, all that kind of stuff. And really, you're doing a lot of cutting and pasting at this point because you've already kind of hit on it. It continues to be unclear as to how drop off and pickup will be forbidden on Main and Church Streets. Proposal does not outline how this will be enforced. I think we hit on that as well. Once again, you know, just give me the paragraph there that, how that works. There's a map that includes how pedestrians will access the site, but doesn't address vehicular vehicles in their circulation during showtimes. Can be anticipated that students and visitor pickup and drop off could create significant traffic congestion. Many community members have experience with school pickups and drop offs. These processes can be hectic and time consuming. Based on estimation, each vehicle could take anywhere from thirty seconds to two minutes for drop off and pickup with an average time of approximately one and a quarter minutes per vehicle. Considering a three hundred plus person occupancy, there could be around one hundred vehicles associated with the theater. If half these vehicles are involved in pickup, drop off, the process could take sixty-two minutes. The site itself appears to accommodate about twelve vehicles. Yeah. So I feel like we hit on that saying that everybody's going to park somewhere else, do drop off somewhere else, all of that. Great. I think you can just, you know, say that's addressed above based on what we've discussed and I would be comfortable with that. A traffic management plan has not been provided as part of the proposal. I think knowing that there's not traffic on the site that alleviates some of that. Jill, were you looking for something more than that?
I think if it can be provided in, in written format, the elements that have been discussed today and how exactly it'll work, I think that will be helpful for not only the board, but the public.
I agree. I agree. Will there be box office located on site? Hit on that. What are the hours? I think we hit on that. Where would those wishing to purchase tickets park? And I think we hit on that. So once again, just bing bang boom, those are cutting out of your slides. That's, that's an easy one. Parking agreements have not been submitted totaling the hundred and seventy-five spaces. So I understand your structure with those two organizations, but just to be clear, there will not be anything formal in writing with either of them?
There's formal in writing, sign.
It says that parking agreements have been submitted.
Oh, sorry.
They have been, they have most definitely been submitted.
Reading comprehension, you know, eight out of ten. What do you want me to say?
What that is, it, there's the mention of seventy-five spaces at the Deland House, but I think what needs to be clarified is it notes dinner hours, but what are weekend dinner hours? And beyond that, the, the Land House also has a parking agreement with the church. And so I think that needs to be explored a bit as to what happens when both of those spaces are used. How do you then propose? So if you could look into that, that would be incredibly helpful, I think, for them to understand how those parking agreements function on a regular basis.
So the, in, in my mind, the bottleneck there would be church and a production at the same time. Because church is taking their parking lot and Deland parking lot and then what?
Uh, Deland has an agreement with the church. So Deland could have an event and be utilizing the church spaces.
Oh, the other way around. Okay. So Deland has a big event, takes up both parking lots. You have a production. What happens? Okay, I, I think you can address that. Yeah, and then that also talks about like weekend dinner hours and the conflict there and all that. It might be nice to know like on a busy night, how much of that church parking is really taken by Deland if they have an event. Like I don't know if you have any information on that, but just a little bit of feedback there to see how, how bad could it really be? That would be nice to, to know.
Um, this would, if, if you recall, Chris, one of the applications that I gave you that did something similar to this was the, um, the restaurant, the Starbucks and Bonnie and Clyde, they had shown up at different times during the day and at night to count the number of vehicles that were utilizing that landing parking lot. And so perhaps something like that could be done here.
Uh, how is it determined that two hundred was an appropriate number, I think, of number of occupants when providing security? And?
I did a little research on that. You know, typically towns don't have a number of when an event needs security. In the UK, the. Um, in the UK, they use two hundred as the number for a security for, for some towns in the UK. Around, in, in the US, typically what happens is somewhere between like a hundred and two hundred, they look at, that's, that's the trigger and then it depends on what the risk factors are. So again, Metallica concert or, you know, you know, preschool, you know, picnic. So I think, you know, the, the two hundred is just a number that was, you know, seen reasonable based on, you know, what other countries and.
Could you have just a brief conversation with the chief of police and just ensure that he confirms that that's an appropriate number or maybe recommend something different? That would be helpful for us, then I, then I don't feel like we're winging it, you know, we got black and white from a professional. What happens when there's a wedding or event that has two hundred plus people, how will that be managed? I think we talked about that, but once again, just the detail of, okay, now we got an event, everybody showing up at kind of the same time, you know, what, what is going on there, how, how are you dealing with that with security, traffic, all that kind of stuff? Catering, whatever other chaos comes with that. How will it be determined that only one crossing guard would be needed per one hundred people? And same thing, I think if you talk with the chief, doesn't he manage the crossing guards for the kids? Yeah, so there you go, I think he's got that one for you too. If there's a large event, how will it be ensured that everything occurs indoors, what steps will be taken to prevent gathering outdoors before and after, whether it be concert, wedding or other event? And I'm not sure we really got into that.
Can you repeat that again?
So if there is a large event, how will it be ensured that everything occurs indoors? What steps will be taken to prevent gathering outdoors before and after an event, whether it be concert, wedding or other event? And Jill, is the concern spillover into public spaces from the facility?
So the police chief had a, a number of concerns related to this because that's obviously the busiest, um, intersection and having, um, not only people spill into the sidewalk into the street, et cetera, but also the disruption that it could cause the residential properties surrounding the property. So, uh, he had requested an exploration into that.
Okay, so I think.
I think there was a little disgust about just, um, in past experiences that people are to go home and, and leave, but I mean, it's not like we're encouraging people to hang out at the, and there's gonna be obviously security or staffing, um, to make sure people aren't just loitering, goofing around on the corner of Church and Main, but.
Yeah, uh, so I'm with you on that, I think based on the occupancy, your response might change to that, I think it's important to clarify that and that would be another one that wouldn't hurt to run by the chief and just say, hey, this is my plan, are we all on board here? Because he's the one you're gonna have to deal with if there's an issue, so, you know? The provo- proposal notes that a beer, wine, liquor license will be secured from New York State for the concession, what are the hours of operation, will the concessions, uh, operate outside of the theater hours, you addressed all of that, I think we just need a response in writing. Is this the proposed second location for OFC, this is a great opportunity to utilize existing data, namely the number of attendees at all the events described in the total number of vehicles, this data will assist the planning board to fully understand your proposal, this has not been provided in any of the submissions, but I think you did a good job discussing it. I think, you know, quantitatively, if we could have that in writing as well, that would be great and that helps us give you the parking waiver, because we can justify it based on some of those discussions that we already had. That was your, that was everything here. Okay.
So I, I feel like if we actually got a document in writing that satisfies, uh, the fire chief's concerns, the police officer's concerns and, um, Mark's concerns in writing under each of the, um, section, number bullet points that was discussed, um, would that be satisfactory to everyone after all of these?
This close bud, like just let me just check the boxes over here and you, you're free, you know?
Chris, how long do you think it'll take to sit in the parking lot, watch traffic, get your sheet filled out?
Well, there's a Starbucks next door, so.
The, um, so all those bullet points that were on that list, just more detail, written out, meet with those people.
Yeah, like just get those village officials on board with you and I think you got it, to be honest, just they just, you know, it's, I can't give you an approval if one of those officials has a life safety concern, that's kind of like you put me in a really bad spot. So don't do that, figure it out with them, they get it, you know, we, we gotta make this work with you. So, you know, just, they know that, ask them what they need and, and let's do it and move on, yeah.
It's really just a written homework assignment, I think, beyond speaking with the police chief and the, the firefighters.
To be clear, too, it's gonna be difficult for you to just reach out to the police chief and the fire chief and they may not understand, so all that should probably go through Jill and I, your communications with both.
All right, we can maybe set up a meeting or something?
If you set up a meeting, I, I'm happy to attend, I, and I, I do want to point out, Jim, that this comes from a letter that was provided to you February sixth, so this is not new information.
I thought we got most of this, all this covered, but, um, written, more detailed, not just in a slide.
An accurate occupancy calculation would be great as well.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, I do think what, what was particularly helpful was to hear from OFC and to get some real details about what the substance of that looked like. Again, so much of the concern has been how are we gonna make sure that this is a safe pickup, drop off? Big events, I think we've always kind of had an understanding that people will park where they need to park, but that day-to-day management of the congestion on site. So including in your submission, the sample that you had from Kodak and stuff like that, it's really just, I would view these, each bullet point just as a bolded topic, give your three sentences explanation and then put that all together. I know that's easier said than done.
Then is the plan to, um, come back for the next month's hearing or does it just be like an administrator review that you?
Jill, is this, is a special hearing available if a submission were prepared and adequate in your view?
Depending on, um, when it's submitted, um, you know, we can potentially have a special meeting, but I have to make sure that I have time to advertise. So, um, you know, depending on when you submit it, we obviously will try to get it on an agenda as soon as possible. But keep in mind that we also have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission for those exterior changes. So planning board, you know, be aware of that, you're looking at this and it's, there's exterior changes that you're going to want to condition on the review and approval of C of A for those items too, whatever they may end up being.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just curious, not wedded to anything, are there components that could be approved from a site plan perspective, um, that they could get working on while other components are being reviewed by Historic Preservation, or can you not segment things that way?
No, so if, let's say, you know, you give the a- approval for the, the site plan, they could do all of those other things except for those exterior changes, that being the, uh, refuse storage, that being the, um, the bicycle parking, the lighting, the security cameras, that they could work on everything else. Because we do have someone in the audience, are there any additional questions for the applicant? Are you clear on what's required, um, to appear before the board?
Yep.
Okay, um, is there anybody wishing to speak in support of the application? Is there anyone as, wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Is there anyone here who just loves a meeting?
Okay, so with that.
So, um, would you like to deliberate then?
I, I was just gonna throw it out there and make a motion to table it, you know, until we have the written document that addresses all those bullet points, please don't make me read through those again, okay? So just, just address them all and then come back when you've got them all addressed.
Can I just add on to that what I heard Yana say? So I have hold pending additional information along with confirmation in writing that the concerns, um, have been satisfied from the police chief, the fire chief and the code enforcement officer?
Yeah, and that is, that, that is my motion.
Bullet point in response to that, I don't know if that's three to four.
I can do that.
So moved.
Jill, I'll send you an email tomorrow with just, um, questions for police chief and fire marshal, so you can then forward that to them and try to get the conversation going.
Okay, um, was there a motion? And who gave the second?
So, motion to hold the application based on the discussed, um, items. All the conditions discussed. I don't need to repeat that after.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned. Again, second? Aye.